Go ahead.
I can use you, Bob. Turn your camera around.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Here's mine.
Ready, Nora?
Yes, go ahead.
Announcement is made, an adequate notice of this meeting has been given and is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4 there six at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Uh, Nora, please call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Jaskiewicz.
Here.
Mr. Kaplan.
Here.
Mr. Pareek.
Yeah.
Mr. Reddy.
Present.
Ms. Snyder.
Here.
Mr. Willands.
Here.
Chairman Ira Kane.
Present.
We also have the Board Planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Present.
Board Engineer, Mr. Holloway, and the Board Attorney, Mr. King.
At this point, if any member of the public has any business to be wrote to this board that is not on this evening's agenda, I hear none and seen none. Let's do the budget of legions first.
I believe we just have one matter on this seven o'clock meeting and, um, on the table
up here is a piece of paper. If you wish to testify in the Chick-fil-A application, please come up, put your name and address on the paper, and then we're going to call the, the members of the public who wish to testify in that order, okay? So if you want to testify either in, in, uh, for or against the application, in support of or in objection to the application, I'd just like to have everybody's name and address, and this will make it easier for Mr. King also when he does the resolution. So. Do we have any correspondence or anything?
I don't believe so.
We have nothing, okay?
I'm gonna get water.
But we have a dynamic traffic. Mr. O'Neill, um, we have your letter. You just, do you want to introduce that letter, uh, just for?
I believe a question was raised at the last meeting, whether or not there was a school bus stop on conduct immediately adjacent to this project. Our traffic expert, uh, did testify at the last meeting that he didn't know anything about it. He reached out to the, uh, school board, there is no bus stop there, and even if there was, it would not interfere with our project. He's available for questions, but it was, just, we're just reporting a very simple conversation.
Okay, thank you. And then we have a memorandum from Mr. Albert regarding, I guess this is a sewer connection. I don't know if this has any... Mr. Chaz, anything on that?
No, nothing in particular.
No, is it, it's okay, that memo, we don't have to worry about that?
It's just when they look to do anything else, they have to comply with the regulations.
Just a normal process, okay? Are you, is your, uh?
Our direct, our direct testimony is done, uh, so we're just awaiting public comment.
Okay. Um, Nora, how do you want to handle it? You want to get that list and call the people out? This is how it's going to work, ladies and gentlemen. Members of the public have an opportunity to testify either in support of or against this application. You will be sworn in just like any other witness, witnesses that the applicant presented because you're, you're dealing with sworn testimony here, okay? Means you got to tell the truth. Depending on how many people we have, and I'm not sure at this point how many we do have, we have four, okay? Well, we're gonna, not knowing if anybody else is going to come in, this is how it's going to work. I'm going to give everybody three minutes to, to make their presentation. At the end of the three minute presentation, I'm going to ask you to stop. At that point, Mr. O'Neill can ask you questions, and any member of the board can ask you questions. Now, if your, if your testimony is not finished, you can go to the back of the line and come back up again. What I'm trying to do is I'm trying to prevent people coming up here and filibustering, okay? Which would be unfair to all of us. Does, does, and this is the time you can, you can make statements. I know I was very emphatic at our prior meeting about not testifying while the questions were being asked, and the, and the reason is that now you're under oath. You're sworn in, okay? I hope you, I hope everybody understands, because I've gotten some, some rude comments in an email to, to Nora. I've gotten some rude comments from people that I mistreat members of the public. Ladies and gentlemen, thirty-three years I've been up here, twenty-three as chairman, and I think my track record of the way I treat residents of this town is near perfect. I'm not going to say perfect, it's near perfect, okay? There are moments when I get my Sicilian temper, okay? And I was criticized for even saying that. Well, I am Sicilian, I have Sicilian roots through and through, and if I want to say that about myself, I have every right to say that about myself, okay? I hope everybody understands. So now we will call the first, uh, member of the public, Nora.
John Cabino.
Yeah, we're opening a meeting to the public. Any, any member of the public who wish to speak in objection to this application, please come forward.
If John Cabino.
Now, we're gonna do that in the order, okay? You have to come up and get, yeah, you have to get sworn in now.
Raise your right hand. Raise your right hand, please. You swear a firm testimony you're about to give before the board, it's the truth, so help you God? That it's the truth, it's the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay. And for the record, just state your name.
Name, John Cabino.
Thank you, sir. You're sworn, you may testify.
Okay. Previously, I, we, what, I didn't complain about it, but we were silenced on many occasions, then we had to hear someone's opinion, we weren't asked for it, so that, I was upset about, of course, but reason I'm against this is because of two things. I've seen firsthand the traffic that these developers could, uh, create when they have direct highway access. Route seventeen, Route twenty-two are prime examples. They back up for miles repeatedly. And two, this bus right to our residential neighborhood, which I've lived in for twenty-two years now, and the safety of all people walk that, walk up and down the street, uh, foot repeatedly, including myself, with my dog, and my girlfriend's children, really concerns me, if everybody could cut through there. Some people do already, but not nearly as much as will when this happens. That's all I have at this moment.
Stay right there for a second. Mr. O'Neill, do you have any questions of this person?
Uh, no questions, thank you.
Any member of the board have any questions of this, uh, person?
You might want to put your address on the record.
It's twenty-seven Hawkins Avenue. I wrote it on that form.
We haven't written that out. We haven't written, that's why I did that. Okay, who's next?
Frank Shitaz.
Nora? Oh, okay.
Is this in opposition or for?
Right now, it's in opposition. You're, okay, so let's continue with anybody else who is in opposition. Anybody else?
Shalom.
Sir, raise your right hand, you swear a firm testimony you're about to give before the board, it's the truth, so help you God?
I swear.
And for the record, can you state, uh, your name?
Shalom Lubin, one thirteen Hawkins Avenue.
Thank you, sir, you're sworn, you may testify.
So I want to make a comment as follows, and I want to speak to the, to the board here, not to the other individuals that are here. We heard a lot of testimony over the past few meetings, but the testimony tended to come from a particular angle and didn't mention a lot of facts that I think are very important. There was no mention of the fact that there's a synagogue on Hawkins Avenue, an Orthodox synagogue, where people Friday night and Saturday walk, they don't drive. That synagogue's been at that location, zoned appropriately for over twenty-five years. I walk the streets of Hawkins and Condit every Friday night, every Saturday, there are cars, there's no sidewalks, it's not that light, it's not safe as it is. Adding twelve hundred cars per day to cut through on Hawkins will make it incredibly dangerous. There are two factors here I ask you to consider. One, many residents on these blocks are not happy about the quality of life change of Chick-fil-A coming next door. You know what? That happens. I don't want to address that at all. Something's going to come in, there's going to be some lights, there's going to be some noise, there's going to be some smells, these things happen. You can't deal with that. No one mentioned why there is an ordinance that drive-throughs can't be a thousand feet apart from each other. There was no mention of that during any of the meetings we had. Why is that rule on the books? So I think we need to ask ourselves, and there may be a safety component to that, to the reason why it's there, before we change the law to allow something to come in that's going to have a drastic impact on public safety, on people walking up and down the street. I see the school bus picking kids up on the corner of Hawkins and Condit. I don't know which bus it is, but there's a bus there picking kids up from that corner. There's a cut-through in the back of Summit and Ball, so kids can cut through to walk to the back of All Saints Academy. That was not mentioned at all in any of the testimony. So before we change a law to allow a restaurant to come in, drive-through, that's going to bring tremendous amount of traffic to this area specifically, and I make this point specifically, this is really about the entrance on Condit. Condit is a residential street, it's not a commercial street. We had traffic studies about forty-six, there were no traffic studies about Condit and, and Hawkins. There's no reason to allow an entrance to a drive-through establishment on a private street with residential houses that will bring tremendous amount of traffic to Hawkins, cutting in to Condit, going into the restaurant. I asked this question, the response I was given was that they need that entrance for the garbage truck. I'm sure there are plenty of ways to make room for the garbage truck to come in from the other side of forty-six to pick up garbage. If Condit was an exit only, it would be half a problem.
That's your three minutes, are you going to be much longer?
No.
Okay, can you, continue.
So I strongly ask you to reconsider to make that an exit only, back to forty-six, make the entrance on forty-six, and if the cars have to back up, they back up. I would posit that part of this plan is that cars should come in on Condit to avoid a backup on forty-six, and if cars do back up, they'll say just swing around, go onto Hawkins and wait over there. Pedestrians, children, people walking with their families, myself included. I strongly ask you, I, I would think it would be unconscionable to approve this plan without first considering the immediate drastic impact it will have on the lives and the public safety of the residents of these streets. Thank you.
Just one second, go back. I don't think the thousand feet has to do with a drive-through. Mr. O'Neill?
It's, uh, the designation of the restaurant.
It's, it's a designation of a fast food restaurant, right? That's, that's what makes it a thousand feet.
It's, it's the class of restaurant.
Class of restaurant. But, look, I live north of your, of your streets, okay? I happen to work on forty-six and the Volvo building for the last four years. How did I get to the Volvo building? Didn't go down to forty-six and make a left turn. I made a left turn onto the first street, that's Hawkins or Ball, I forgot, that's Ball. I would drive all the way down Ball to Summit, and I would make the left and then pull into the park and let it vol. Now, I understand, and, and, and the, the entrance and exit at, at forty-six is, I'm sorry, on, on Condit is definitely a consideration, but if I was going to go to Chick-fil-A, what would I do? I would make the right onto Ball, I would go down to, uh, Condit, I would make the left, I go out to forty-six, I make the right. I, I sympathize with you, and I, and I will, and I think the board will definitely consider maybe eliminating that entrance and exit completely, but I don't think it's going to eliminate the traffic. And that's just my opinion.
Can I respond?
Yes.
I think there's a big difference between locals that know the ins and outs of the neighborhood and putting an entrance on Condit. If the entrance is there in people's mind, that's the way to get in. If they happen to know how to cut through, that's always going to happen. I would posit that most of the people in your building came in from forty-six, and the some that knew came the other way.
If I was, if I was had GPS on, and I was coming from, from Lake Highawath and Beverwood Road, where would that GPS send me? That GPS is going to send me straight down forty, uh, Beverwood Road to forty-six and tell me to make a right. It's not going to tell me to go through the neighborhood, so, but I, I appreciate, fully appreciate what you're saying, and, and I, and I understand it, and I'm, I'm, I'm considering what you're saying. Thank you.
Actually, uh, excuse me, that would be incorrect, uh, because the GPS recalibrates depending on what the satellites deem as traffic-filled, so it would bring you sometimes to local streets. It happens in all states.
Now, I, when I come out of, I come out of my house and go down to Vale Road, I look at the, the GPS, and it says that Vale and Beverwood are all backed up, and I go through the side streets, but it doesn't tell me to go through the side street. It tells me to go straight down.
Yeah, well, you've got a bad GPS system, but, but ubiquitous GPS systems.
It's Google Maps.
Mr. Chair, with all due respect.
Okay, next, uh, next person?
That would also, can I just respond to your thing?
Mm-hmm, sure.
That would also allow, if there was no entrance on, on Condit, that would allow signs to go up or an ordinance to be passed making it for local traffic only.
But didn't we already discussed that there's going to be no left turn out of there, right?
But there's an entrance allowing people in.
I get it, but we've kind of addressed it a little bit already.
A little bit.
Okay.
There already is an exit on Hawkins from the bank onto, onto Beverwood. Right turn only, cars make a left, but it's a, there would never be an entrance from Hawkins into the bank. It's a residential street.
Thanks.
Could I ask one question, please? And, and I, I think you've been a, a very credible witness, and appreciate your patience and insights on some site. The testimony we were given by other, uh, people here, though, what about other facilities that could be coming into that site if we do not approve this application?
So some of the-
Does that concern you at all?
Some of it does, some of it doesn't. Some of that testimony I question the accuracy of. I know a twenty-four hour Wawa would never have been approved on that spot because it's within five hundred feet of a synagogue, and there are ordinances about that.
I, okay.
I don't know, Mr. O'Neill's shaking his head, no.
Okay, that's, okay, so.
I think this was important enough to bring up too earlier in the presentation as well, you know? I mean-
There were a lot of things that were not brought up.
But I mean, in regards to-
There was no mention of a synagogue.
Your questioning.
Yeah, there were a lot of-
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, when you had an opportunity to question the applicant.
What would I have questioned?
You could have questioned-
They made no reference to any of these things. These were not part of their testimony. They made no reference to any of the streets.
That could have been a question in and of itself.
You couldn't have considered these other things.
That could have been a question in and of itself.
That was related to the testimony.
Let me, let me, let me just give you a word of caution, okay? Let me give you a word of caution, because I've been doing this for a long time, and I've seen other properties in this town, and, and this may be a very blunt statement. Devil you know is better than the devil you don't know, and I have seen other pieces of property where we turned down residential, you know, zoning change to put up, put up townhouses, and the area balked at it, and they ended up with something, and I'm not going to tell you what they end up with, but they ended up with something tremendously worse. So I'm, I'm, that, there's a new owner of that property, he's not going to be happy with fifteen percent occupancy, something, and again, I'm not prejudiced, I'm not trying to, I'm telling you, something is going to go into that property.
I have no issue-
And it might be a Wawa, you never know.
I have no issue with this establishment coming into this location. I have an issue with the en, the entrance on Condit and the fact that-
Yeah.
The public safety issues have not yet been addressed. Those are my concerns.
And, and you have a valid point that there's no sidewalks in that area, especially since the Orthodox people walked to the, to the, to the synagogue. I fully understand that.
During prime, during prime hours, Friday night, Friday evening, Saturday during the day.
Fully understand.
These are the times that are the busiest for the Chick-fil-A.
I understand, thank you.
Thank you.
Nicholas?
Is it, uh, still in opposition?
Yes, still opposite, no. No, that's it. Anybody else for, anybody else on the list?
Uh, only those who, I guess, want to speak.
Well, let's go to the, let's start from the other ones then.
Frank, if you could raise your right hand. You swear a firm testimony you're about to give before the board, it's the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
And again, for the record, you're Frank, what's your last name?
Jesus.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Frank Jesus, I stand here before you ever as a representative for the interests of the business sector. I am very grateful for the community of Persipony, as you have all been so supportive of Empire through the years and years to come. With that, I hope I do not upset anyone with my opinion on this matter. I will try to be brief and honest. I like speaking from what I know, and what I know is that my very industry, the New Jersey Diner, had to evolve and change in order to endure social changes, and in order to survive, those who refused to change did not survive. It is quite simply the same, adapt or fail. The same applies to communities and towns. This town needs change, it needs a facelift, it needs new blood, it needs corporate partners, and without it, Persipony will never reach its potential. Because make no mistake, Persipony has the potential for greatness. I unfortunately can't personally validate a lot of the concerns that were presented as I recognize the efforts that are being done, made, in hopes to prevent the disruption of the lives of the nearby residents. I also have an understanding of the many real steps that will be implemented to make sure that they do as promised, as well as the financial commitment on their part of those involved with the project in order to achieve those goals. As a neighbor business, I understand the need for growth, and in order for our business to be successful, we as a community need to remain focused on moving forward. We must all think of what is best for all the residents and the business sector as well on Route forty-six. Needs to be, remain mindful of nearby residents. However, in my humble opinion, the residents must also understand that the business sector next to their homes can, can't simply remain stuck in time. It must change, adapt, and evolve. Chick-fil-A will bring a positive, positive traffic to our area. So I will leave you with this, by definition, progress is moving towards a better future or higher stage. If there's no struggle, there's no progress. So let us all see the struggle as an opportunity for a better future for Persipony.
Thank you. Any, uh, questions, Mr. O'Neill?
Uh, no, no, thank you, no questions.
Any questions about the board? Thank you, Frank.
Nicholas?
Sir, you raise your right hand. You swear a firm testimony you're about to give before the board, it's the truth, so help you God?
I do.
For record, can you please state your name?
Nicholas Lemanov, one seventy-eight North Beverwood Road.
Thank you, sir, you're sworn.
Good evening, board and, uh, members of the public. Uh, I'm here tonight to speak, uh, about the property in favor of the application for Chick-fil-A, uh, for the old Colony Plaza. I have some bullet points, uh, to go over why this could be great for Persipony. Currently, that site is in very bad condition. Uh, over the past year, there's been at least six that I know of, uh, reported burglaries over there in the businesses, uh, where we, first responders had to go out there and board up and secure the premises, loitering, uh, car accidents, cars into buildings. James Jewelers was commonly referred to as the drive-in jewelers over there, because all the time there was a vehicle, uh, inside the store. So, uh, the building has seen its days. Twenty years ago, that, that, when I moved to Persipony, um, that building, that whole Colony Plaza was all filled. Now, it's like seventy percent vacant. So if it was all filled, we would be seeing, seeing a lot more traffic. There used to be a car shop in there, it used to work on, uh, Sound Waves, it used to work on Cars, a lot of other small businesses. There's businesses not only in the front, what you see on Route forty-six, but there's also businesses in the back, and what they commonly refer to as condos, um, they're, they're also in the back. So it would be bringing a lot more traffic, uh, over there if it was full, but it's not full. It's sitting there, it's moldy, it's deteriorating, uh, there's a lot of problems in the building from leaks and stuff, and grass and overgrowing and stuff. I think, uh, Chick-fil-A, something like that, who really cares about their image, is going to put a nice curb appeal, uh, to that town. It's, it's, it's almost the center of Persipony over there, so I think it'll be great, uh, for that. And like a lot of testimony said, uh, anything else can go there. It could be, uh, twenty-four hour quick check, Wawa, gas station, something that can attract a lot of noise, a lot of light, a lot of loitering, a lot of problems, uh, but here, you're proposing a freestanding Chick-fil-A, uh, that's going to be closed on Sundays, uh, which is cool, which is good, and it's going to, um, it's not going to be a twenty-four hour. So anything else, it could be section eight housing, it could be any type of housing, and that's going to put a burden on our schools, uh, as well. But here, this application is not going to do that. And it's important that we bring strong and reputed businesses, uh, that will increase our rateables and assist our, our suffering township budget. So by bringing businesses like this, this is helping our budget, our helping, uh, Persipony as a whole, uh, which is good, and it's not going to put a burden on taxpayers. This is all part of a development master plan for our township, so this has been in the works for years, uh, about, you know, re, redeveloping that area, making it nicer. And, um, that's it, I believe it's good. Chick-fil-A is amazing to the community, uh, they always do everything for the first responders, for the schools, they are a great person to have here, a great partner to work with, and I truly support this, uh, application, and I know we could work towards, I know people have concerns in as a first responder and in, in traffic section and in law enforcement, I believe that we could work, uh, together, um, to fix any problems, any traffic concerns, and make this, make sure it's also safe, that there's sidewalks, there's everything. Chick-fil-A is work, uh, willing to work with us. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. O'Neill?
Uh, no, thank you.
Any members of the public, I mean, members of the board have questions?
One, one quick question, Nick.
Yes, sir.
You said Chick-fil-A is willing to work with you, and you mentioned sidewalks in that same sentence. Do you have knowledge that Chick-fil-A is interested in putting in sidewalks?
Uh, I have, I have knowledge that they are very good to the community and that they're, uh, willing to work and talk about, uh, issues, so I know that, uh, that they, I believe there was testimony, uh, given that they would provide, uh, sidewalks depending on where they could, based on the plans.
There was no testimony to that.
That would be sidewalks on the property, not on Baldwin.
I believe they're putting it in the front, that's, that's correct. Front of forty-six corridor.
Okay, at this point, are any other members of the public who wish to testify? I hear none and seen none. Mr. O'Neill, would you like to sum?
Yes, thank you, everyone. Just to sum up where we're at, this is a, uh, single-use replacing the existing Colony Plaza, which is a multiple-use commercial area, some disrepair, uh, currently features, I want to correct one of the members of the public who said Sound Waves is not there. Sound Waves is still there doing car installations, as is a bait place, various other commercial entities. The, uh, Colony Plaza is mostly paved on the lot, you heard testimony about existing conditions, there's no real buffer, a lot of dumpsters in the back. What we're proposing is the single-use replacing the entire Colony Plaza with Chick-fil-A, with an increased buffer in the back, actually, anything would be increased but a significant buffer in the back, and, uh, plenty of capacity for any stacking or parking of vehicles that may occur based upon Chick-fil-A's experience with restaurants like this, including experience with the Route ten property. What we're seeking here in front of you is a conditional use variance, the class of restaurant is permitted, well, restaurants are permitted, the class of restaurant is not permitted, and setting aside, uh, the legality of proximity regulations concerning classes and uses other than things like gas stations or strip clubs, which is the only two examples I can think of that are being upheld, uh, whatever the impact of being within a thousand feet of another fast food restaurant across the highway, it would be minimal if it even exists. It certainly wasn't part of the, I don't think they anticipated that it would be a variance for having a thousand foot between a McDonald's on one side of Route forty-six and a Chick-fil-A on the other side of Route forty-six. But we've certainly demonstrated that there is no traffic issues regulated from this site. Our uncontroversial traffic report has shown you that, uh, what Chick-fil-A expects and what you usually find with restaurants of this type is, the traffic is already on the highway. This is a main highway through town, Route forty-six, being used by commuters going home, people doing other shopping. It is, the majority of the traffic that's going to Chick-fil-A is being taken from that traffic already on Route forty-six. It's the same as it is on Route ten. It's not really a destination type place. Uh, we've done an analysis of the surrounding area, none of it impacts any of the intersections or highways in any significant way. In response to a question regarding, uh, the Beverwood Road intersection with Route forty-six, uh, we showed you that it does not require study, it is actually one-third of the total impact on that intersection, uh, that would trigger a study of that intersection. And what we're talking about, about impact on that intersection, we're not just talking about what was testified to by, uh, members of the public, this U-turn that exists as you're traveling on forty-six going eastbound, the U-turn on forty-six going westbound. That number that he gave you, about thirty trips into that intersection, Mallard, is everyone coming down North Beverwood Road, everyone coming up South Beverwood Road, everyone everyone going in each direction on Forty-Six. The impact anticipated added to the site is less than a third of what would be required for study. There are a number of, a couple of bulk variances associated with this application regarding replacement of a canopy for staff, for doing the drive-through in what is really the front of the building, that faces Route Forty-Six. That was done for a couple of reasons. One, the study of Chick-fil-A corporate has shown that having people outside moves that line along much faster. If you're a patron of Route Ten, you've probably seen that. And that canopy is for the comfort and safety of the members of the staff. And also, we're providing that buffer to the existing residential property behind them, who have been behind Condit all this time with the various uses and problems behind Condit. Without any buffer, we're trying to buffer that use as best we can from those people. So I think the testimony is very compelling. Certainly, the applicant is a compelling applicant. Not being open on Sunday is a limitation corporate-wide for that company. They have no operations on Sunday, and the representation was in it. But I can't testify, I can't, I'm not going to testify, but I can report that there was a study at the board's request about doing a sidewalk on the Condit side of the property. It does appear that that would fit. So as we represented at the last hearing, if it fits, we'll do it. So we'll do it. But I would hope that the board would see this as a great improvement over the dilapidated problematic Colony Plaza and approve this restaurant. Thank you.
Thank you. This completes the applicant's application. Are there any motion to go into conference?
So moved.
All in favor?
All right. Can I pose?
Mr. O'Neill, I just discussed with Peter, the list of conditions if approved, you offered to do the hours of operation, no Sundays, and I have six to ten, six AM to ten PM.
Yes, that's correct.
But they expect on some special occasions?
Yes, special. Some special occasions, they expect that those to be cleared out.
Yeah, the business, yeah, understood. Is there a note to be placed on the plan to shut the lights off? It's referenced in Collier's letter?
Yes.
And they'll do that?
We will.
You'll do the sidewalk on Condit as you just indicated?
Yes, we will. There's bank parking.
Yeah, we agree with that. That's on the plan, right on the sidewalk.
Is there any way of looking at entrance there? Mr. O'Neill, one of the things I'd asked for was a scrubber. I believe that was rejected.
Well, the testimony was that the chicken is cooked in a sealed vessel, so the scrubber would not be necessary.
And I asked about french fries.
He doesn't want them.
You have you have performance standards in your ordinance. If there are odors, you can you can act on it.
I apologize, Mr. Kaplan, I forget about the fries.
If I could add one item to the list. On the EV parking space, we wanted to have some details showing that it's handicap accessible.
Oh, yes, yes, definitely. We agree to that, yes.
Chairman?
We're doing site plan now or second?
We're in conference up here, right? Mr. O'Neill, there seems to be rumblings up here that we don't want to see an entrance on Condit. If we were to approve this application without an entrance or exit on Condit, would you be agreeable today?
I have to consult with my client for that.
Well, it's wait, that's the way the resolution may may fall out, so, okay. All right, let's let's start with the comments. You're shaking your head down there, Mr. Jaskiewicz, like you're you're
I'm ready to go.
You're full of vinegar.
Oh, I am. So I'm in favor of it. I live in the area. I go by there every day. My wife takes the bus from New York. She deals with the traffic. But for the most part, the traffic really stops at Beverwick, and it really lightens up once you get past there. So that's less of a concern. I think my only hesitation really was the Condit Street exit because, as Shlomo put it very eloquently, it is a real concern, and it was seemed to be a real concern for the residents that were here last time. I think you are taking a kind of dilapidated, a third-used property, and you're cleaning it up. I know the coverage is going to be much less, so we will have less of a water problem. I think it's a very good point that something is going to go there, folks. And we don't know what it could be if it's not this, and we know this seems to be a good neighbor. The project looks beautiful. I see other projects that they've done. I fully intend, expect it to be the same thing. I think the variance, as it was written, really didn't come in, I guess it didn't think through the fact that it's it's a thousand feet, but it's across a major highway. So it's it's not next to each other, and they already, we already have two next to each other, so we made a an adjustment there. So I'm going to be voting for it. I hope we do do something with the Condit exit, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Jaskiewicz. Mr. Ready or are you prepared?
Yes. I I really like this project. This is a great improvement to the community and the town, especially that the place is so bad, in bad shape now. Is that Chick-fil-A is very popular and everybody loves it. So it is a great improvement, bringing Chick-fil-A to Persipony areas. My only concern, like my colleague said, is for the safety purpose of the families and the residents, the Condit, that entrance should be, should not be there. So that that is my concern. Other than that, having thousands, next to thousand square feet, another drive-through, that is nothing to do with, this is across the other side of the highway. So that is the least bothered situation. So I'm in favor of this application.
Mr. Williams?
We're asked this board to grant a variance for a restaurant with drive-through lanes, fast food, within a thousand feet. The main opposition of that would come from that other fast food restaurant, who's never appeared to oppose. And I think the testimony has been very clear that that probably doesn't have a major factor for us here. So that issue for me is is not an issue. The other issue is, however, the whole issue of people coming from the back roads in and out of this site. I think Chick-fil-A has been a wonderful job and already agreeing no no left turnout. I don't see, I saw a whole heck of a lot of testimony that would impede or hurt the business if they could not access this site off of Condit and only could access it off of Forty-Six. So if that could be conditioned somehow in agreement with the applicant, I will be voting in forward fully.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Parek, are you ready?
I am in favor of this application, but I'd like to make some comments. What I heard is mainly the issues of traffic and circulation. That was the major concern for this application, especially for Hawkins, Ball Avenue and Condit. One thing I know, that most of the people who will come to this restaurant, restaurant won't be their destination, they'll just come here. Most of the customers will be on their way home, or so it would be like a directional traffic instead of just a destination traffic, and that helps. That doesn't increase the total number of cars on the road. The U-turn, there was a concern about the U-turn on Forty-Six. And that one, I think, getting the numbers of about thirty cars at the peak time, I feel comfortable with that. This applicant has done a lot, I believe, for the neighbors in the back with the landscaping and fence and, you know, covering up. Right now, I visited the site, and you just see through, there is nothing there to protect the neighbors. And this application does that. It helps the whole situation about the neighbors in the back. The good thing is, there's no Sunday business that helps. Sidewalk on Condit, I'm for it, and I hope that we put it as a condition of the approval. The landscaping, I mean, look at the site currently. I mean, it's really in a bad shape. So the improvement that they are making, the landscaping, I believe that will help for this property, this site. And we should, I'm in favor of just closing down the Condit in and out. I'd like to see that. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parek. Who is next, David? I can't, is it?
It's me. Yeah, so I love the idea of having a Chick-fil-A in Persipony, however, not here. I feel that the application as presented will have a sledgehammer type of effect in terms of negative impact on the adjacent neighborhoods and already compound an already bottlenecked traffic situation and errant motor vehicle situations that already exist in this corridor and the tertiary roadways. I do feel that this application basically, in effect, will transform the local tertiary roadways into very busy secondary roadways for which, for which, and most importantly, these streets were never designed to handle. And so it's 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 my firm prediction, with all due respect to the testimony, that these streets will be nothing more than busy thoroughfares to the point where the already errant traffic maneuvers that are happening now will be exacerbated without enforcement. And I want to be fair, because police departments all over the state simply don't have the manpower to handle it. So and I also disagree that I feel Chick-fil-A is a destination, a location by the very nature of its, the popularity and branding. They should not be punished for it, I understand that. But nonetheless, let's let's accurately call it, because, you know, sound zoning, in my opinion, should be a balance of not only the documentation and the testimony and the answers to questions, but also zoning members and and the like going out and assessing firsthand what the surrounding neighborhoods are indeed enduring at this time. These neighborhoods are enduring right now eighteen-wheeler tractor trailers making K-turns at Condit and Hawkins. They are enduring commercial, commercial traffic as it is. So I don't hold too much weight on these signs, signs everywhere, signs being effective in regards to not transforming these tertiary roadways into extremely busy, busy secondary roadways to the point where they mimic primary roadways. Mr. O'Neill testified at our last meeting that studies are never wrong. And as long as humans are conducting these studies, no human is, and no human is flawless, then Mr. O'Neill's statement is not only flawed, but to some degree, I think presumptuous to make. And while NJDOT certainly, I guess by the testimony, does not require a certain level of scrutiny to some of the unanswered questions, meaning the U-turn, the eastbound Route Forty-Six U-turn, and the fact that, I guess the prediction is so minimal that NJDOT doesn't require further study, you know, I just, I don't know, I just, I just think that it's a, it's a little bit disingenuous, because if if I was the applicant, I would certainly want my traffic expert to turn around and preempt every conceivable traffic pattern that can happen to this location. And so to dismiss that eastbound Forty-Six U-turn at Beverwick, I think actually is remiss, if not derelict, derelict in duty for any traffic expert, because if anybody knows that one lane U-turn at a five o'clock peak, afternoon peak period, again, from Baldwin to North Beverwick, it takes four to five lights to just hit that U-turn. So I think that'll be further exacerbated to a degree. Also, too, you know, and again, the surrounding area, because then we've also got westbound eighty to my argument that I'm making, westbound eighty onto the westbound Forty-Six. You know, Chick, when I see Chick-fil-A, I'm like, hey, kids, we're going to Chick-fil-A. And so there's going to be, there's going to be some impact on traffic that probably would normally take that westbound eighty to Beverwick to 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 access that Chick-fil-A. And if anybody understands that westbound Forty-Six traffic pattern, and it's not just Thursdays and Fridays, it's it's now becoming every day, it is a pretty backed-up situation between the westbound Forty-Six off-ramp onto westbound four, excuse me, westbound eighty off-ramp to Forty-Six, all the way to Baldwin. So I don't also remember in any of the testimony in regards to, we kept, we kept talking about the improved prototype of this of this particular site. However, I don't, you know, there was no, and 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 I welcome anybody to, you know, to correct me or clarify, but I don't remember the prototype being so detailed as to how many cars were going to be, going to be cleared, as to why that was so revolutionary, if you will, as opposed to other sites that Chick-fil-A, that Chick-fil-A runs. And this is critically important, because if you look at other Chick-fil-A sites, all right, it's not, it's not a clean two lanes in, two lanes out. I have yet to see one that does that. And so my concerns about Forty-Six is the the spillover onto, well, the spillover from the site onto westbound Forty-Six, because I've never seen a Chick-fil-A site operate so cleanly like that. And so, and then, and then to Mr. McDonough's presentation, you know, he cited a slew of other businesses, and and it was mentioned here on the board that could move in. I totally agree with that. But some of the, some of the businesses that he mentioned, and the profiles of those businesses and operational demands of the businesses, do not include huge lines of traffic queuing and protracted times where cars are idling. And if you, again, I get the head out of the documents and go out to our neighborhoods. This site is on top of, is right next to the property, the the backyards, the backyards, the decks. And so while I could appreciate that Chick-fil-A is not open on Sundays, how about the quality of life of these neighborhoods Monday through Saturday? And, you know, it's easy for us to sit here when we're not going to see this Monday through Friday and Saturday. So, you know, to to turn around and just say, hey, hey, guys and gals, you know, you get to enjoy your property on Sunday, well, how about Monday through Saturday? I think it was a little bit disingenuous to kind of pitch that. I mean, I, you know, kudos on your salesmanship, but, but, I mean, you know, when you look at it, it really is kind of ridiculous. And it's like an Alice in Wonderland testimony, where an expert witnesses outline, outlines what, you know, the impacts that he means is what he decides the impacts really mean, and not what is rooted in reality. And again, I say this with all due respect, because, you know, your testimony was wonderful in the sense that, at the end of it, I I thought a Chick-fil-A should be in every neighborhood. But after the testimony, when you, when you sit and think about it, and you go out to the neighborhoods, and you see exactly where everything's going to kind of be, you know, and and how close everybody's yards end to where this application proposal is going to start, it's quite concerning. And in the beginning of this application, I had mentioned, and I I really was not kidding, I don't think an eight-foot fence is tall enough. I, I truly don't. I, you know, I'm, I'd be inclined to say a fifteen-foot fence is tall enough. And then, if, you know, if you're going to do the buffer, better make sure that those trees are greatly matured to help these residents out, because as it was presented, it was a little bit more sunshine, rainbows, and pixie dust in regards to all that in the back. And then, of course, there is the, you know, the the concern about the noise factor relative to the, to the, to the garbage disposal logistics. And, you know, let's not kid ourselves about it. This, this development is in very close proximity to these neighbors. Noise of metal clanking is extremely jolting. And, and that's it. And for these reasons, as it stands now, and I pray, I pray all of what I'm saying doesn't come to fruition. But I'm concerned about this traffic from all ends, and the noise factor, and the quality of life for our neighbors who bought houses in tertiary roadways that are now going to be secondary streets. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and everybody for indulging me.
Mr. Kaplan?
Yeah, this is, this is a tough one for me. There are obvious pros. They've been shared already. And there are cons. And we heard a lot of expert testimony, and tonight, we heard what I consider to be the most expert testimony, which is the testimony of the people who live there, because nobody knows the neighborhood better than the residents. And I, maybe one exception, I think, the people who spoke against the project were the ones who lived there. who lived there, and the people who spoke for the project were the ones who didn't live there. And with all due respect, I think I have to side with the people who live there, at least err on their side. The scrubber, you're gonna laugh at me, but that scrubber means a lot to me. I know what it's like to live behind a restaurant. And the restaurant I live behind, in the planning phases, when I brought up the concern about odors, the scrubber was brought up, and it wasn't a problem. It was put on, probably two minutes of discussion, maybe two minutes. I don't understand why that's a concern for this applicant. I would like to see more traffic calming, or at least I've had a conversation about traffic calming devices on those roads back there. I'm concerned about that. And I certainly won't vote for this with that condit entrance and exit. So, I really think I'm a no vote at this point, until we can confirm condit, the scrubber, and have a conversation about traffic calming devices.
Mr. Berkowitz.
First of all, I mean, I'm a big fan of Chick-fil-A. Whenever I go traveling, as soon as I see one, I get off the highway, have a meal. My concern is Chick-fil-A in this particular location, and how it affects this neighborhood, or how it's going to affect this neighborhood. I think it's going to change the quality of life of this neighborhood in a large, in a large way. And I'm not sure that closing the entrance on condit is the answer, because you're still going to have cars coming through the neighborhood to make a right turn onto forty-six to avoid the Beverick and forty-six light and traffic backup. Once they get on forty-six, they're gonna go in, get their meal, and then come out, and then make a right turn on Summit and go back to the neighborhood. So, maybe spreading it out a little bit, but you're still gonna have neighborhood. And as one witness said, there's no sidewalks in this neighborhood for people to walk on. People are walking in the street, and you have excess traffic. I don't see that as a good situation. I don't even, I mean, I don't see Chick-fil-A putting sidewalks in the whole neighborhood. But that would alleviate, I think, a lot of problems. I just, as much as I like Chick-fil-A, I just can't vote for this, for what it's going to do to that neighborhood.
I'm going to repeat what I said before, the devil you know is better than the devil you don't know. And what you've got here is a significant reduction in pervious coverage, buffering that you don't have now. You're gonna have designated entrances and exits off of forty-six, which you don't have now. Significant amount of improvements. We're only dealing with a fast-food restaurant within a thousand feet of another fast-food restaurant. If they came back with a restaurant, wouldn't be before this board, right, Mr. O'Neill?
That is correct.
There might be an entrance and exit on condit, is that correct, Mr. O'Neill?
I'm sure.
You're sure it is?
Where do we stand on that?
Well, I'm in favor of taking...
Where you stand on that, this is the application.
Well, but there was an issue with regard to a number of the members. One, closing condit, a scrubber. And then, I think the third issue was traffic control.
Traffic smoothing.
But I don't know.
I have a question for Mr. Kaplan about when you're done.
Yeah, I don't know what Mr. Kaplan meant by, and whether he meant speed bumps.
But as I indicated, I need to consult with my client.
I am also in favor of closing the condit. I think Mr. Chadwick has, you know, conference with me on that. No need for that entrance and exit. I would recommend a gravel entrance with a chain, so that emergency vehicles could get into that, from that point, if necessary. There's no need for an entrance and exit there. As we discussed, go around to forty-six and go into the property. I just worry, ladies and gentlemen, you're going to get worse. You're going to get worse. You're going to get a strip mall, you're going to get a small supermarket, it's going to be open twenty-four seven, and also don't know what the courts are going to do. So, this applicant is very agreeable. I agree with Mr. Kaplan. If the scrubber is what he thinks is neat, I will not dispute that. The entrance and exit on condit, again, I will not dispute it. But I think you people are very far sighted about the volume of traffic that's going to go through those streets. I have driven those streets for the last four years going to my office. I would never think of coming back to Beverwick Road to get onto Beverwick Road north or south. When I used to come out of my office, I would go down to Baldwin and make the jug handle and go that way, or take Baldwin and go home. You're being very short-sighted. There is not going to be that much traffic on those streets, ladies and gentlemen. I swear to you, it's not going to be that. Like I said, I go to work there for the last four years. The volume of traffic on those two streets in the morning at eight-thirty, nine o'clock, ten o'clock, there's no traffic there. There's absolutely no traffic there. The kids, and I will agree that sidewalks are needed there, especially by the synagogue, sidewalks are needed, but that's nothing that we have control over. This community should be going to the council. Maybe a sign at the corner of Beverwick Road and Hawkins and Ball that says, no trucks, no trucks over, whatever, I'm, you know, that's another possibility, okay? But I really, I really think, ladies and gentlemen, and believe me, I have no shares in Chick-fil-A. I think I've eaten in a Chick-fil-A twice in my life, all right? Okay? But I am looking out for the residents, for the applicant, for the town, like I have for the last thirty-three years. What's good for everybody. Significant buffering on the residential side, significant buffering, eight-foot fence. You want a ten-foot fence, we'll put barbed wire on top, just to make sure nobody climbs over it. Really, think about your vote. Think about your vote.
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand that barbed wire comment, Mr. Chairman. The reason why I said fifteen would be probably advantageous is because you're not going to be the one on your deck, sitting and looking at the back of your property. This has nothing to do with security.
Residential properties, people bought those residential properties way after that commercial property was there, and that's contention I always had.
The intensification of this use is...
It's not an intensification. It's actually a decrease in the use. It's a decrease.
And they have no fence now.
And they have no fence now. And if you put, if you put Norway spruce in there, in five years, you won't even see this property.
In five years, how about moving in the trees that are already matured, so they get immediate relief?
Is there a berm, and that fence is on a berm?
No, no. Ten-foot fence with heavy vegetation, and maybe we get them to put the vegetation on both sides, if that, if that helps, okay? There are some things that we can do, but I'm telling you, the traffic, the traffic is not...
Bob, I just ask you a question, just to, I'm not arguing, I'm just for clarification. My interpretation of this is, is that it's an intensification of the site, because, look around, I mean, every Chick-fil-A, there's non-stop cars, where right now, that site is almost dead.
Well, it's bankrupt.
Yeah.
The site is bankrupt.
How is it?
The intensification is the amount of volume that could be, that could be there if it was a supermarket, if it was a Wawa.
And it's zoned for any of that.
And you know what, you get a Wawa application, you turn it down, they go to court and they get approved, you're stuck with a Wawa.
I understand, I understand that.
Look, there's a new owner on this property. He's going to develop that property, one way or another, he's going to develop that property. And I, and I don't want to, I don't want to mention the property that I'm thinking about, okay? But it was supposed to be townhouses, and it got turned down. And what we got after the townhouses was a far more intense, because it had, it had inherently beneficial use, and we couldn't, we couldn't do anything because of the inherent benefit.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make sure we're doing everything we can to insulate those neighborhoods.
Yes.
I want to cross every T and dot every I, so that when I go to bed tonight, I can say, all right.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
Mr. Kaplan, I believe strongly that the applicant we currently have in hand would protect these residents better than any future applicant possibly could. That's where I'm standing on, okay? Now, I guess the point being is, the testimony that we've received, okay, and the scrubber thing, I don't, I live near the other Chick-fil-A. I've never had any odor from Chick-fil-A. I heard the Chick-fil-A people say...
How close they live compared to...
Well, I don't live in the backyard, but no. But my understanding was from the testimony, that the process they use is significantly different than any other fast-food restaurant with beef and whatever, okay? That was my understanding, okay? That was professional. And nobody seemed to fight that, okay? As this board's diligence, I really love it, because we're here to grant a variance based upon this thousand-foot issue. That's really my understanding of all we're supposed to be doing here, that that's the only reason we're here, to get that variance.
Thousand feet.
A thousand feet. The people that would be offended by that thousand, or intruded upon, have not even objected here. Number one. Number two, when we initially heard this case, we had a lot of residents here, okay? We don't have too many residents opposing now, okay? And I think that maybe the testimony and a few other things are, to me, convincing that this application is worthwhile to be approved, okay? So...
Well, so let me ask you a question. Now, we've, the applicant has heard our concerns. Is it fair to ask Mr. O'Neill to go back to his applicant and see where they stand on Mr. Kaplan's three suggestions?
I'd like to see a resolution and see what's in there.
Well, how do we vote on it if we don't know what's in there?
Well, we can, we can propose...
Do a draft and have everybody review it.
But we have to take a vote on that resolution. We have to take a vote to have him prepare a resolution, an affirmative resolution, correct? There has to be a vote for an affirmative resolution.
Chairman, I have a question for you. Since you said you have been taking those Ball or Hawkins the last past four years to go to your work, you're doing that. If there, if there were speed bumps on those roads...
There's no speed bumps.
No, if there were...
If there were speed bumps...
Would you still go there or go on forty-six?
I'd still go on those roads, because Beverwick Road is backed up, you know.
The speed bumps are not meant to keep people off the roads, they're meant to...
Just slows the traffic.
Like Park Road. Park Road are very effective.
I hate it. With regard to, with regard to the speed bumps, that would be a municipal...
We can, we can part of resolution to encourage the town to consider sidewalks and speed bumps and prevent truck traffic, and, you know, do a lot of improvements as part of our resolution. Am I correct?
We can't make conditional on them, because they don't have the ability to do it.
And we can put it in a separate letter to the township, that this is an area that needs, needs improvement, and it's not a big expense. It's not like we're asking to reinvent the wheel or anything. Sidewalks on one side, maybe some speed bumps, some sides.
The thing with sidewalks is, you know, there may be some people who don't want sidewalks, because now they've got to maintain them in the winter.
Exactly.
You know, I know, I'm just, that's why I never brought up sidewalks.
But the sidewalks, I think, are only, would be only one of the Chick-fil-A problems.
All right, so, so the issues that we have, and I'm going to present them, we have the closing, no, no ingress, yes, with condit. An adequate filtering system, and I'm not going to use the word scrubber, an adequate filtering system to ensure that an absolute minimum amount of food odors come from the property, okay? Those are the only two things that we're requesting of the application.
Sidewalks.
I'm sorry.
Time of operation.
Time of operation, which we all agreed on.
There's a number of things that Pete and I voted on.
The other things that Pete...
There's a whole, there's a number of things, and there's also, I believe there's some deviation with regard to shrubs. I think you did agree, your client agreed, to beef it up with larger, which we didn't mention.
You'll, you'll work in concert with the town forest.
We will plant as big a tree as our experts, and as the township forester said, we'll take, because the problem with planting too mature a tree is it doesn't take.
No, it doesn't.
So, we will plant as big above...
You plant a ten-foot Norway spruce, in ten years, it's twenty-five feet tall. I got him in my backyard, I'll show it to you. I planted it to, believe me, that type of, that type of vegetation that grows and matures, and then they agree to maintain them. They agree that if they die, they'll replace it. Is that a possibility, is that okay?
That's part of the site requirements.
Okay, all right. So, and now, the other items that we're...
I believe the traditional condition for buffers is to work with Mr. Walsh, the township forester, to satisfy his concerns, which have never been slight.
Okay.
But we will add to that, he's our expert. We will add to that, that we will plant as big a tree as a buffer, or a shrub as a buffer, whatever the word is, as we'll take.
Okay, then we're going to, we're going to add to that, to encourage the council to add...
Signage and more speed bumps.
Speed limit, sidewalk, and necessary side, signs to avoid truck traffic on the two roads, and, you know, do our best to do that. Mr. Kaplan, does that cover everything?
Yeah, the only thing, just want to be crystal clear about is, the way you phrased, and you said you didn't want to use the word scrubber, and I don't know why you said...
No, I'm, I didn't know if that was a generic term.
I think it's an industry term.
It's an, okay, fine. Scrubber or...
Scrub analytic.
Scrub analytic.
Whatever device is necessary to remove...
Yeah, we should, we'll get the proper device, Nate.
Can we put the vegetation on a berm?
I don't think you can. I think you got to get in front of that. I think you just, they opt the size of the trees from six to eight already, but defer to Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Walsh.
I'll remind the board that there was testimony that there is a property in the rear which is discharging water onto the site, which is being collected in the back. So, you probably don't want to create a berm condition that would cause water puddling. I don't remember the exact testimony, but I would hope the board would take my advice.
Will your engineer provide the necessary information as to how that should be done? You mean, your engineer would, right? I mean, that's got to be part of his plan, right?
A berm? I'm asking the board not to recommend a berm.
No berm at all?
No, just leave it as is. We'll beef up the...
I'm sorry.
Is that on both sides? I think the chairman had mentioned, or someone had mentioned, maybe trees on the residential side if they wanted.
My understanding on that water runoff was that there was no need to do anything there, and there was a consideration of what should be done, and the testimony I heard from the professional was, they thought messing with it wouldn't help, was necessary, okay? So, that should not be tampered with in any form or fashion.
I don't know why we need a berm if we have significant vegetation and an eight-foot, eight-foot high...
Because it could become twelve foot.
I hear you, in ten years, it's twenty-five feet, but the people have to live there for those ten years. So, the higher you can get, the better.
Foot a year, foot a year there.
No, I...
An eight-footer will be ten feet in two years.
I, I, trust me. I think that impervious is less now.
I have tremendous success with that, that type of tree.
But all we're saying is, the bigger the head start you can give it, the better.
I have a shed right in my property line behind me, the shed's probably twelve feet wide. I don't see it. It's gone. Okay, all right. So, now, I need a, would someone make a recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, may I interrupt you to ask a couple of questions of Mr. Kaplan? Mr. Kaplan, was that recommendation regarding traffic smoothing relating to local streets or something on this property?
Local streets.
At the scrubber, you're describing as of a type and kind that's been recommended by this forester in the past, is that true?
I don't know.
Is there any way of limiting, I don't know if we're going to have queuing on the highway, but is there any way of limiting?
Don't be any queuing.
Well, Mr. Chadwick made the comment that we have an ordinance here on the amount of emissions of odors or something, right?
You've already, you've already required, but they're not a standard thing. Some, some, some want to use the scrubbers, and some want to use catalytic converters, there's all different kinds. I think you just put the global...
I would...
They will address odor.
Chick-fil-A would want to do it once, and put the best that they can, so the issue's done.
If that makes Mr. Kaplan happy, I understand you're going to do it, right, Mr. O'Neill?
As I apologized to Mr. Kaplan, I forgot about the French fry issue. I could die of that. I forgot about a scrubber, I have to. So, the other thing that I wanted to be clear of was there, I know Ms. Snyder requested a higher fence, but I don't think it would change Ms. Snyder's mind, whatever we do with the fence. But is there some-
Well, if you want to be a good neighbor, be a good neighbor. I mean, you know what I mean, whether it changes my mind or not.
Well, there's no eight-foot people walking around, so I don't think there's going to anybody who can be able to see over the fence.
Yeah, yes, that, you know, you know, you- Protect the residents for Pete's sakes. There are elevated decks in back of these yards. I, I, I just don't get it. I, I don't understand what the argument is. And maybe, maybe, maybe it's, it's, maybe it's a conversation with the residents, I don't know, you know what I mean? They're the ones living there. You're all tucked away and, and you're not right in back of Mars Plains Chick-fil-A. You're, we're all tucked away in other communities.
Ms. Snyder, was your, were you serious with the request for a sixteen-foot fence or was that-
Well, I mean, something that'll suffice, you know, in a sufficient fashion, protect the residents who have elevated decks, who sit on their decks on Monday through Saturday and just, you know, are shielded by whatever the activity is going on on that site, you know? Just picture if it was your house, Mr. O'Neil. What would you, you know what I'm saying? If this was moving in, in your backyard and you're literally, I, I'm sure you saw the site, uh, it's very close. I mean, what, what would protect our residents so that their quality of life on their property is best preserved as much as possible for this particular proposal?
Well, let me reframe the question. We normally propose these fences to prevent light pollution from headlights and things like that. So, there's really no height that you can propose that the sound wouldn't get along.
Well, in this case, right, so, in this case-
But is there something-
We're transforming, like, just people-
Excuse me, is there anybody else that's in favor of a sixteen-foot fence?
I didn't say sixteen, I'm, we're, we're just, okay, come on.
Anybody in favor of-
Stop being dismissive. I, I understand that and I don't know because I don't, I don't live there, but right now, Mr. O'Neil, right, we have a very dilapidated mall where people just occasionally park, turn off the cars and go into whatever, you know, tenants are, are still there. Now, these residents are now going to be bombarded with, you know, idling cars that, for a protracted period of time on the site, and I would assume that they're not going to enjoy their properties as much, you know, looking directly at that. So whatever will help them, help shield them from that site.
Let me see if I can-
So maybe ten foot, maybe, I don't know, anywhere between ten and fifteen, I don't know. But I, yeah.
Because the view of the building itself, the idea is the foliage will buffer that. The fence would not be adequate.
You know what, they could use all the help they can get because remember the noise now of the operation of declining metal, I mean, just give them anything they-
It's a ten feet?
Such, yeah, I, I guess that would, you know, again, I, I don't live there, so I-
I'm not in favor of a ten-foot fence. Eight-foot fence is more than adequate. Extensive vegetation that will grow rapidly and absorb sound and absorb a lot of the light, eight-foot fences-
You would agree to it if it was your property, sir?
No, I would not. I would never have bought a property against, alongside a resident, a business property, Ms. Snyder.
Okay.
I would be smart enough not to, to, to think that what's on the other side of my fence is going to stay as it is.
Okay, let's move on.
Again, it's an effort of being a good neighbor, Mr. Chairman.
I think I have enough direction.
Thank you.
I would appreciate a brief recess so I can consult with my client.
All right, I'm telling you what we're going to do, Mr. O'Neil. We're going to carry this case to the seven-thirty meeting. I've got some residential's I've got to take care of, okay? So we're going to carry this to the seven-thirty meeting without notice and you'll give us an extension till the seven-thirty meeting, right?
I gave you an extension through the end.
Okay, fine. Is that acceptable, Mr. King?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, motion to carry this case to the seven-thirty meeting.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion to adjourn the seven, uh, thirty, seven o'clock meeting.
Ouch.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, let's get our residential's out of here and then we'll-
Yeah, resolutions too.
Yeah, we've got resolutions too.
Nora, do we have any resolutions? We have one, right?
Just one.
I have all, I have a whole list here. What do we have?
What resolution do you have, Nora?
Uh, it's, it's, um, I apologize, New York Renaissance.
New York Renaissance.
All right, um, will someone move New York Residence Renaissance? I'm sorry. Any, any discussion? Nora, call the roll. Oh, wait a minute. Hold on, hold on.
You have to get the meeting going.
All right, announcement is made, that adequate notice of the meeting has been given and it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA ten colon four dash six at second of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Kaplan.
Here.
Kari.
Yes.
Ready.
Snyder.
Here, Willing.
Yep.
Ira Kane.
Yes.
Board Planner, Mr., Board Planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Resurrection resolution.
Board Engineer, Mr. Holloway. Board Attorney, Mr. King.
Any members of the public have anything to be brought before this board that is not on the seven-thirty agenda? Hear none and see none. Uh, all right, we have New York Renaissance, uh, resolution, would somebody like to move that?
Move.
Second asked.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Kari.
Uh, I wasn't there, right?
Yeah, you're not there.
No, he's not there. Yes, he is.
Yeah, I wasn't, okay, yes.
Was he, was he?
Come on, Casey.
Willing.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes, okay. All right, let's go into the cases. Uh, righty, we are going to do application twenty-two eighteen, Devell Patel, JB Sixteen Properties Trust, Sixteen Robert Street, variance to construct, two one-story addition, shed and pad for fireworks, fireworks, firewood. Mr. Patel, are you present? Please come forward.
You can use these microphones. Raise your right hand, you swear affirm testimony about the report board's true self you got. And for the record, your name is, um, Devell Patel and you're the owner of a subject property. Thank you, you're sworn, you may testify, have a seat if you feel comfortable.
Okay, you're in an R-two zone, you have fourteen thousand eight hundred square feet. R-two, where, where is Robert?
Who's that, uh? Who was that fellow you know? Those are the little ones down up, um, the road.
Yeah, Rock, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. But twenty thousand square feet is required in the R-two, right?
Right, so from what I understand, uh, when the complex was built, event would then be modifications?
There was, yeah, okay, it was an R-two modified, right.
Speak into the microphone.
So if you were, if you were in a R-three zone, you would probably wouldn't need any of the, you'd be here. So, so, um, I'm just looking.
Can you please move closer to the microphone?
Pull the microphone closer to you.
Ah, okay.
So, front yard is existing forty-two point seven, you're leaving that alone. Uh, rear yard, ten feet is allowed, you're proposing six. Yards and courts, open deck, years are allowed fourteen, you're proposing eighteen point three eight. Building coverage ten, you're proposing sixteen point five six. Impervious coverage twenty percent, and you're proposing twenty-nine. Board, please remember, this is an R-two modified and if this was an R-three zone, you would probably not be here. And R-three zones are fifteen thousand square foot lots. So why don't you tell us what you want to do and why you want to do it?
Okay, so, uh, I want to put a shed at the back to put the garden equipment, tools and stuff inside. I don't have a basement, so a lot of the stuff from the home that gets, you know, through the season, we have nowhere to store it. So, at the moment, everything goes in the garage and we cannot park our cars there and just running out of space in the home. And also, uh, with the kid growing up and, you know, working from home situation, we want to create a little extra space. We have a room there already, just want to make it big enough so we can use it for a study, combine, uh, you know, office kind of area.
Well, you're just looking to square off the back of your house with that?
That, that is right.
Those two additions would probably make it more attractive looking, right?
Got it, yeah.
And, um, the, the, where are you proposing the, um-
Back corner, right?
This is the shed, where is the, uh, pad for the firewood?
Right next to it.
Yeah, right, it'll be just right next to the shed.
Uh, oh, I see, I see, okay, yes, thank you, thank you. And what is this thing, this square over on the right side?
That's not his property, huh? Garden, isn't it?
Yeah, the front, like on-
It's a garden?
Yeah.
Okay, and where that, that, that fifty, oh, I see, this is an unimproved road over here. This is not your property, I apologize. I apologize. Okay, so basically, simple, simple request.
Yes.
And it's for your family so that you can, you can function better in your home and you have sheds for your storage. Any other questions by the board?
And you're going to agree to do the, what the engineer suggested with the sewage pit and the water runoff?
So I spoke to, I actually had a, uh, like a meeting with the, the engineering department and what we were discussing was, because he's, we had other issue on, on that lot with the water coming from the, the property from the back, so all ground can be saturated, so he suggested that maybe we can do, uh, rain harvesting, so we have drums on the top to collect water and then, you know, distribute it for gardening.
So you'll do whatever the engineer says?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Jaskowitz. Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening? Hear none and see none. Uh, there's nothing else you'd like to add?
No.
Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? In support of this application? I hear none and see none. Um, recommendation de minimis, what are we talking about here, guys?
Apparently benign application, um, and as long as the applicant complies with the recommendations from a municipal engineer, I'd vote for it.
Mr. Kaplan, you want a good resolution also?
Absolutely. An application number twenty-two eighteen, Devall Patel for JB Sixteen Properties Trust, located at Sixteen Robert Street, block seven thirty-three, lot eight in the R-two zone. I recommend the board grants a C variance to construct two one-story additions, a shed and pad for firewood, uh, and with the recommendations of the engineer contrary to section four thirty dash thirty-five columns four nine ten thirteen and section four thirty dash ten I.
Second Snyder.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Kari.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder. Yes. Willing.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. Results of variance is granted. Memorialize this at our next meeting, which is not going to be for about four weeks and then you'll be free to proceed, okay? We don't have any more meetings in August, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next application, two-two-two-two.
Yeah, I'm sure it's going to be.
Sandy Metta, Seventeen Eric Way.
Sir, raise your right hand, you swear affirm testimony about the report board's true self you got. Yes, and for the record, your name is Sandy Metta, owner of Seventeen Eric Way, correct? Thank you, you're sworn, have a seat. Thank you, feel comfortable.
Can I ask a question behalf of the board before we start? You have a fairly extensive report to the town engineer on this. Have you met, discussed with him at all the issues he raises?
Yeah, I did, I did talk to him. So he just, the town engineer, he came over and saw the property.
Right.
And, um, so I was not aware that, you know, there are certain, these rules and regulations about certain coverage I already constructed. Uh, so my, so, so when I bought this property like three years ago, some of it was already existing.
That wasn't my question. You, he came over to your property, he's written a report, have you read that report?
Yeah, yes, I did.
It seems to be that there's no solution at this point. He's recommending to you to remove a lot of that impervious coverage. Have you discussed that?
So I have only discussed once when he came first time, after that we have not discussed.
So you did not see his, he didn't bring his report with him? He wrote that after he had come into your property, correct?
Correct.
Have you read his report?
I did, yes.
But not, uh-
But there's no, there's no solution at this point for this board to react to it. It basically says, no, at this juncture. That's how I interpreted the report. And I'm wondering whether it was premature because your plan doesn't show any removal of any of the improvement you made, and I don't think it's, makes sense to kind of negotiate how much is going to be reduced unless we have some input from the engineer.
So, there's a lot of-
That's why I interrupted, I'm trying to make this, we don't spend a half hour here tonight, come to no conclusion, waste everybody's time. I think you really need to go see the engineer and discuss what reduction in coverage is, is going to be required.
Right.
I think what Mr. Chadwick is saying, this is not going to be approval, this is going to be removal, okay? So I really think you, you need to have an in-depth conversation with our township engineer, but you might also have a, a, an opportunity to hire an engineer of your own to see what can be done to mitigate some of this. I'm looking at this application, you're requiring seventy-seven percent impervious coverage? That's obscene. It's absolute obscene. You're permitted forty percent, and the reason you're permitted forty percent, I think this was a special deal over in that quadrant. You got forty. And, and unfortunately-
Seventy percent's like mountain.
Yeah, unfortunately, the builder built forty percent. He didn't, he didn't leave you any, any, uh, leeway at all. It was, you know, the other thing is this nine-foot fence, you better figure out how you're going to get that down to six because-
Right.
Nine-foot fence don't work. Not in residential areas.
No, the three feet is a fall, it's a leaf, green leaves, it's like, it's not a fence fence, it's like a fall.
They're calling it, the, the, uh, the, um, zoning officer is calling it a fence? Not on your phone. We need pictures. Mr. Chairman? You gotta make 15 copies of whatever you do, okay? Bring that as evidence. I'm sorry, Mr.-
Well, I was just gonna say, existing is nine-foot fence, he's proposing one-foot fence.
Proposing a one-foot fence?
That's what I'm reading.
No, fences and walls, nine existing, six allowed, he's proposing nine.
So it's a six-foot fence with a three-foot-
Nine-foot is a side door.
The three-foot, can you remove that?
Yeah, yes.
So he agreed to remove three foot.
You might want to put it on your property too.
Yeah.
We can't refer it on someone else's property.
No, sir, I took permission.
No, it doesn't matter, it's not your property.
We can't give you relief on someone else's property.
Right, I'll remove it.
Um, what we can do is, we can give you a date in the future where you could come back, you know, with significant evidence. You may want to hire professionals, okay?
So the, what, what is their goal and objective, like drain, like drain the water? I mean, what, so?
Well, there's a, there's a lot. We, we don't necess, you know, if you came to us and you were at 40% covered, at 40% allowed, and you said you want 48, and you made a case of why you want that 8%. I want to make a little patio so my kids can play, they don't play in the mud. You know, we do, we do things like that, but we don't, we don't double, we don't give you double the permitted, and did you do all this work, or was it like this when you bought the house?
No, so, so that's what I was saying, you know, so a lot of, on the left side of the house, whatever was done, there was no permission taken, I didn't know that. So I came to know later, the engineer told me that this, the walkway on the left side, you know, the, the previous owner did not take any permission.
Right.
Now, when I came in, there was a sinkhole in the backyard, and we have a dog, and we have, you know, kids playing.
Right.
So I filled up that hole, and I put pavers on it. But again, the pavers are like, you know, there, there is like water can seep between the pavers.
Well, this is all testimony you can give, but you, you gotta give us some evidence to show us what it looks like. And I'm encouraging every member of the board to go look at this piece of property.
Yeah, I do.
Please, please go look at this piece of property.
And have you had conversation with your neighbors?
I did, so, you know, my neighbor is here, one of my neighbors is here.
There's more than one neighbor here.
All right, hold on, are you, hold on.
Okay, 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 I believe you.
No, at this time, what, it's better to talk to the neighbors and get the professionals.
Okay.
Give me a date, Nora.
December 7.
December 7th.
So, 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 I mean, what I have to do is like make sure that, I call it calling a professional.
Go talk to the town engineer.
Okay.
You can repeat whatever you heard tonight, how all of you presented. We'll talk to him and tell him why we're sending you back. You're going to be reducing, you're going to be taking some of the stuff out. Let me tell you what happens. If the board rejects your plan, you're going to get a zoning violation. There are a thousand bucks each time you get one. And you go to the municipal court, you have no permits or anything, you know what's going to happen. You don't want to be there.
Right.
So. Talk to the engineer, get a suggestion.
Start with that and then decide what you, what sort of support you're going to need.
You, and I'll just give you another little brief tidbit. In previous applications where we had significant drainage issues, as, as the engineer is talking about here, the applicant has hired an engineer to devise a, a plan of how the runoff would be dealt with. It's not just a matter of digging a hole and running a pipe into it. It takes, it takes some work. So you, you might want to investigate that. Uh, I don't know if Nora can give you any guidance in those areas, or maybe the engineer can, Nora?
The engineer?
Engineer. Talk to the township engineer. I'm not asking you to go spend money on professionals, but you got, you got problems here. This is not an easy one.
We don't need to understand the grading, but you're not getting anything. 77% is a lot.
And it sounds like you have some neighbors that might be none too happy.
Yeah, you're not, you're not going to end up with 77%, I can tell you that.
Talk to the neighbors also. That's more important. Neighbor should not complain.
Do I have a motion to carry this case to December 5th? Without further notice, you're just going to have to give Nora an extension of time. Okay, she'll tell you what you need to fill out. Is that okay? December 7th.
Okay.
For Harvard Day.
Thank you.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this case will be carried to December 7th. You will not receive any further notice. If you have any questions prior to that date, call Nora. If for some reason the case is going to be carried from that date, sometimes things happen, she'll let you know. So you have to keep in contact with Nora. December 7th is a long ways off, so.
Okay, so we're not going to speak today?
Nothing today. Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neill, are you ready?
Uh, do we have another one?
We have one more.
It's not a residential.
You can leave, folks.
The large group, is it?
What? What am I doing? What am I looking at?
You have one more, it's a commercial.
Commercial application. Lackawanna Avenue, it's a-
What about Jimin's?
I don't know Jimin's.
Trailer, trailer stories.
I don't have that.
We don't have it.
Mr. O'Neill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, everyone. Joseph O'Neill, once again, for the applicant. Thank you for that opportunity to consult with my client. After consultation with my client, we have a, we would like to propose the following. We would like to propose the closing of the Condon Avenue entrance and replacing it with emergency entrance only.
Okay.
With grass pavers, chain, prevent that.
Okay.
We would like to propose what is called a pollution control device. An appropriate device to control the odor that might be coming out of the building to work with your health department as to the appropriate device.
Okay. Okay.
I believe that was, yes, we're not proposing anything.
All right.
We'll, I'll reaffirm, we're going to work with Mr. Walsh, or the township forester, state of the D, to the appropriate buffering of that area.
And you're going to be good neighbors, right?
Chipotle is excellent.
Okay, um, there was a recommendation that we vote to have Mr. King prepare a resolution.
Draft.
A dra, a draft. Well, he prepare a resolution that him and Mr. O'Neill will go over and we can see.
And then I'll, I can circulate it to the board prior to any meeting.
So we're not voting, or we are voting?
Wait, wait, Mr. Kaplan, has this latest discussion changed your mind at all?
Yeah, it, it helps, I appreciate it. It's really my thanks, I still, just, I need some clarification on how we can traffic soothing, traffic calming, how we can work with the council to ensure, like, this is, this is important to me. So if the council says no, they're still-
Yeah, we can, we can, we can strongly propose that they investigate, it's not going to happen overnight, you know that. I mean, but I think we have a good, a good opportunity to go to them to, to tell them what they, what they need to do to protect those two streets. We're not going to sell deals at a world, that's for sure. We're not going to sell. And, and as you heard, the businessman from 46, he, the business needs traffic. It needs traffic to survive. One other recommendation that I would make is that we talk to the state about putting a no-U-turn at intersection of Beverly Road and 46.
I don't know, but I like that. I use that too much.
Uh, yeah, you, so do I, coming out of the gym a lot of times, yes. But that would, that would, I don't, I don't even know if U-turns are permitted there. I, there's no, there's no sign. I don't necessarily know if U-turns are even permitted there. Everybody and his uncle does it.
There are no U-turns.
There is no, there is no no-U-turn sign.
Right.
He's permitted, yeah.
I don't know if it's implied that if there's no sign, then a U-turn is permitted, because it's dangerous. Because you got all that traffic that's wanting to make the left turn, and people are slowing down.
What they should have done was, they should have had two lanes.
Should have had two lanes, that's right. That is a, that is a Class D intersection, okay. Will someone make the proposal that we instruct Mr. King?
Some, some word.
Based on the conditions that we discussed this evening.
Some word.
Second Jaskowitz.
Any discussion? Nora call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Snyder.
So this is not a vote for the proposal itself, so just the resolution, that's what I'm saying yes to?
I think that's a yes to the whole.
No.
What does that mean?
It was not yes to the, well, I, I just want to make sure. Am I saying yes to the project?
This is a yes for me to draft the resolution. It, it's going to have to be carried to a meeting.
Yeah, I mean, you're not-
Where we're going to-
I'm not voting yes, but I'm not voting yes to this development proposal.
We're voting on, you and I are going to draft the resolution.
But that's what I want to make clear about my, my vote here. That's right, I just want to make sure, that's why I, that's why I said what I said.
I don't think that's what Mr. Snyder thinks.
No, just to draft, not to vote for.
We're voting for a draft, we're not, we're gonna-
We're not voting for the-
For the final action.
This is not voting for final action.
I'm confused.
We're, we're voting to approve, do we draft?
No.
A proposal based on the guidelines we talked about. If we approve that and the proposal comes back, what happens? Are we approving, or?
No, then you're going to have a meeting where then you're going to vote on the approval of this application with the resolution.
But what I don't understand is if we know exactly what's going to be in the draft.
Yeah, we, we-
We've always, we've always gone this procedure to clarify the points in the resolution. And that by voting tonight a yes means you're voting for the application.
I can simplify this.
That's always been my understanding. I have never, ever heard of voting to tell you, to tell Mr. King to do a draft that we can then, we know what's going to be in the draft. We know 98% of what's going to be in the draft, we're voting tonight.
So Snyder, no.
Do I need to start over?
Yes.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Snyder.
No.
Willings.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. So the resolution passes?
Right.
Nora. When do we come back to the resolution?
I don't think you have to come back to the resolution.
You don't like lieutenant.
You, you two, you two negotiate the, the thing, and then we just approve the resolution based on what, what we see. That's, that's-
Yeah, it's, it's, it's on the agenda, you know that.
All right, very good. Thank you, everyone, have a nice-
Sir.
There was one thing left out.
What's that?
And that was that, in the original meeting, Chipotle was amenable to delaying the pickup time of garbage a little bit later in the morning.
That's part of the details that we've got written down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we have one more case.
One more?
One more.
Good luck.
One, one more case?
One more.
One more? Case? There's one more case. Debbie, you want to go home?
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You were very strong.
You the rabbi?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm easy about, maybe you're a massive rabbi, not a rabbi.
It is what it is. You know, she's supposed to, we get along. You're the best. Well, no offense. That's true. Let's wait the board. I hear ya. You guys are the best, how about that? Thank you, Rabbi.
The landscaping is not good.
Okay.
You're going to be up close to the landscape because that after the drive, you know, you're treated with the iden-
I think we did a good job.
That's the town, pal.
One more case, application 2219, 50 Lackawanna Avenue LLC. Uh, D variance for outdoor storage of shipping containers. Okay. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, Board Members. For the record, my name is Joe Capero from Corzio, Denver. You live on the town of Lackawanna Avenue LLC. Uh, this application is a request for minor site plan and use variance approval.
Just excuse me for one second. For, for the record, Mr. Willens has to leave, but I think we'll still have seven board members. One, two, three, four, five. We still have seven, we're good. Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay, thank you. That's okay, have a good evening.
Have a good Saturday, young man.
See you in September.
Why not?
You may proceed.
Thank you. Again, we're here for a minor site plan and use variance approval for the property at 50 Lackawanna Avenue, that's block 135, lot 2. Uh, the site in question is located in the SED 5A, that's the Specialized Economic Development District. The request is to allow 25 shipping containers to remain on the property to store the packaging associated with the existing business at the facility. Uh, the, according to your code, section 430, 146C, materials that are being stored in enclosed buildings or otherwise screened. Um, a use variance has been noted by the township. We are here seeking a request for the use variance to continue to store this associated packaging and material in these shipping containers along with minor site plan approval. Uh, I know you've had a busy evening, so I'll try to keep the presentation very brief. Uh, I'd like to begin by calling a representative of the company first to give an overview of the operations, the history of the company that's enjoyed doing business in Precipity for many years, and then you'll move into our professional testimony from our engineer and planner. Uh, so unless there's any preliminary questions, I'd like to move in and call our first witness, our first witness, Somath Hasina.
Man, if you could raise your right hand.
Thank you. Come on, come on, sit down here.
You swear a firm testimony about to give before the board, it's true, self you got?
I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Somath Hasina, first name S-O-M-A-T-H, Hasina, H-A-S-I-N-A.
And you're, you're just a representative of the company?
Correct, I'm an employee of the-
Testimony's faction. Thank you, you're sworn.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Hasina, can you, first of all, you're an authorized representative of the applicant, correct?
What's the name of the applicant? What's the name of the company?
The name of the applicant is 50 Lackawanna LLC.
What's the name of the company that can tell?
So the company that is located at the 50 Lackawanna property is Venus Laboratories, Inc., DVA Earth Friendly Products.
Would you speak into the microphone a little closer?
Earth Friendly Products?
Correct, yes.
Can you give an overview of the history of the company and how long it's been operating in Precipity?
Yes, um, so the company was founded in 1967. We've been located in New Jersey since about 1988, but we've been in this specific location since 2013. So we're going on about 10 years now. Earth Friendly Products, our mission is to create sustainable and affordable cleaning products that help protect people, pets, and the planet. Um, so we make a myriad of cleaning products that you would find in residential houses and commercial buildings such as hand soaps, disinfectants, dish slopes, things of the like.
And this is a family-owned and operated business since its inception?
That's correct. The, the company is family-owned and operated. Um, when our founder passed away in 2014, he passed the, the realms down to the current CEO in 2014.
And your business is the production of environmentally friendly cleaning supplies, correct?
Correct.
Can you explain the impact that the pandemic had on your business in 2020?
Yeah, um, so the, the pandemic, I think as we all know, has had drastic effects on not just individuals, but companies as a whole and just the way people run their day-to-day lives. You know, it's, it was difficult to gauge how this was going to affect, you know, so many different industries, but for certainty, as soon as the pandemic kind of arose, we knew that the cleaning product industry was going to get hit hard because that was the first line of defense that, you know, was championed from the CDC and all other health organizations. So as soon as, you know, it hit the US, as soon as, as it hit international borders, our demand for products skyrocketed. So in order to meet that demand, we needed to exponentially, you know, raise the, the products that we were making. Um, we had to buy more components, more raw materials to meet this demand for the community in a time when it was so needed for these products.
In addition to the increased demand resulting from the pandemic, did you encounter any supply chain issues during that time?
Yeah, definitely. I want to say, if not concurrently, but, you know, as the pandemic was progressing, these supply chain issues became really relevant to the manufacturing industries and every industry as it was becoming difficult to buy, find components to make these products for the community that we could, you know, get out there quickly.
And is it safe to say that due to the increase in demand for the type of products that you produced as a result of the pandemic, that you had an immediate need for additional storage capacity?
Yes, definitely. We needed a place to be able to store the bottles, caps, all of like the main essentials for the products so we could meet the demand for the products when the orders were coming in.
So this facility at 50 Lackawanna not only packages the materials, but also ships and if there's a warehousing component?
Correct.
The containers that we're talking about this evening, the reason why we're here before this board is because there are components, as you have classified them, stored in these shipping containers on site, correct?
That is correct.
One of the questions that was raised or asked of the board's professionals, are there any products stored?
There is no product, there's no chemical materials, none of that kind in the containers. Only plastic bottles, caps, things of that sort.
And they're stored there temporarily until their demands for the production, and then they're brought into the facility?
That, that's correct.
And then shipped out with the product inside?
That is correct.
So it's all packaging?
Packaging, correct, yeah.
I know our application was filed some time ago, and we identified 25 shipping containers currently where at that time were on the site. It's my understanding that as of recently, there are less than 25 containers, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is it, is it 22, is that the number?
There are 22 now, correct.
How many, how many are you going to ask for then, 25 or 22?
Um, we will need the 22.
22 is enough, not 25.
22, but if we are able to get the 25, we will-
Say 25.
25.
You had a couple just floating around the lot on that map.
So, Mr. Chadwick, that's a great point. Our engineer looked at that and went out to the site, and those are act, that's actually a trailer from the loading dock, but I'll, I don't want to testify, I'll let our next witness.
So you're going to correct the plan?
We are going to correct the plan and identify which are containers and which are trailers associated with loading. Because it's hard to tell from the aerial, so it was correct to point that out.
The, the site, do you own the site?
So the-
Are you a tenant?
We, so the site is owned by 50 Lackawanna LLC, and the tenant is Earth Friendly Products.
All the same, all the same family?
Same family, correct, yeah.
You manufacture there and stu, and have storage?
Correct.
Product company?
Correct.
You got any plans to expand the building?
So due to the unprecedented effect of the pandemic that we're having right now, we are first and foremost dealing with the supply chain issues. Um, in the long run, I definitely think that that might be in the plans for, for the facility since we have already devoted so much time to this facility and have also expended a lot of resources. But for the immediate future, um, the containers are what will help us kind of get to this.
We, we have had other cases similar. All the industries have up and down. And most of them were a temporary solution to go to just bang the building on the back, I guess.
Yes. No.
But that isn't part of the plan at this point.
That's not part of the application. Is it my understanding from your testimony that there's the uncertainty is what? The uncertainty that-
Correct.
You don't know if you're going to keep up with this volume.
Correct.
If the disease goes away, you're-
Who knows what's going on?
Yeah.
It's been hard-
You don't want to take the risk, let's put it that way.
Correct, yes.
One of the, one of the other items, and I know your, your site engineer will get into the specifics on where the containers are located and the impact on parking. Currently, there are approximately how many employees?
About 37.
And how many managers?
Um, we have about, I want to say three.
I mean, maybe, I think it's seven on the plan. Does that sound, does that refresh you?
Yes, yes, you're correct, seven.
And the hours of operation for the facility?
We're from 6:30 AM to 3:30 PM, Monday through Friday.
So the facility is not open any day of the week later than 3:30 in the afternoon?
If we have office staff on site, I'll say maybe the office staff, you know, just tying up loose ends. But for the most part, in terms of the manufacturing side, 3:30 is when the shift ends and all of the manufacturing components for the building comes to a close.
One of the comment letters requested a photograph of the containers. Did you have an opportunity today to take some photographs that you'd like to share with the board?
I did, correct. I took this this morning at around 10:30 AM. Can I go ahead?
Should we mark these as A1? Packet as A1 or how would you like?
If you have it in a packet, we can do it in a packet.
I have them all in packets.
Did you say you have 35 employees?
37 employees at this site.
And you have ample parking for 37 employees?
There's over 119 parking spaces.
And you don't have 60 or 70 visitors every day, right?
No, not with the pandemic.
So would you... Should we mark these, Mr. King, as A1? Can you... Would you like?
I can have them there.
While I'm doing this, just to save time, I know the board's had a long.
Just give us all the thing. We'll pass it down.
This was... These photos were taken by yourself?
Correct, yes.
Today?
Sir, stop apologizing for our long evening. It's only nine o'clock. If it was 10:30, I could see.
And do these accurately reflect the site?
Yes.
Have they been doctored or altered in any way?
They have not, no.
Did you keep one for yourself?
I did not.
Well, hopefully, there's an extra one. Here, you want this one? Here, I have it. Here you go. Ms. Hasina, just walking the board through these photographs, the upper corner of A1 or the top page of A1, those are the containers in question, correct?
Correct.
And there's an additional photo on the first page. We talked about the fact that from the site plan, there is a discrepancy as to what's a storage container, what's a trailer. Does this photograph taken today show an actual trailer?
That's correct, yes. That's the recycling trailer.
And this is the location where on the plan, there looked like there was some... Was that recycling material that was waiting to be moved into the trailer?
Correct.
On the third page, the third and final page, can you explain where this picture was taken from?
This is taken from the very front of the office building as trucks pull into the backlot right here. This is what any consumer or any visitor kind of sees when they're entering the facility.
This is from Lackawanna Avenue frontage?
Correct.
And we see the trailer in the loading dock, but are those the containers in the very distant rear of the site?
That is correct, yes.
And so is this an accurate vantage point of someone that was driving on Lackawanna Avenue?
Correct, yeah.
And that's what you would see if you drove by?
That is correct.
Chairman, I have no further questions for this witness.
There's no residential properties around you, are there? Does anybody live near you, like within 250 feet or... It's all... That's all commercial in that area, right?
This site is bounded by Route 46, correct?
That is correct.
Restaurant across... I mean, restaurant across this side.
Yeah.
That New Mexican.
Yep, yep. I think it used to be, I forget what it was.
You used to be TGI Fridays.
That's correct, yeah.
So that would be the view that patrons would have. Where I'm going with this is that looking at a slew of trailers is not pleasant. It's not aesthetically pleasing. And if I'm going to this restaurant, which is really, I would think, the main draw for typical outside of employees in that area, nobody wants to see all that. So is that visible from the road, you know, from the restaurant? And if this isn't the right witness, I can wait till the next.
Yeah, maybe we have the next witness. Thank you.
So is that tractor trailer, I guess it's number 24 on this diagram, is that permanently fixed there?
That's the refuse. I mean, sorry, the recycling where the...
It's not permanently fixed there, no.
That really shouldn't be labeled on.
Correct. It's that... I think that's what Mr. Chadwick was referring to. That's not a container. That's actual a trailer.
I see that it's a trailer, but it's delineated on the site name.
Yeah, they plunked down containers on top of the trailer and that was the real question. Now I understand it. Let me ask you, these containers, do they come full and you just take?
Do the containers come full?
Right.
No, we put in... We put material into the containers.
You put empties on the site?
Correct.
You put empties in storage, just like building a warehouse?
Correct, yeah.
And then you fill them as you get the litters?
That is correct.
And you've got them all lined up at the back of the parking lot, basically now?
Just as it looks.
And to address Mr. Kaplan's question, is there any reason you couldn't slide them over to the other side of the parking lot?
I think Mr. Kunsman from Bowler would be a better witness to talk about.
Basically, you return this to parking and push your storage over the other side.
What is stored in these containers?
What's stored in the containers? Just like bottles, caps.
Packaging.
Packaging material for the products, some liquids.
Does the new temperature control?
I think...
I didn't... I'm sorry, did you hear the question?
Temperature controlled. Temperature controlled, is it?
No.
Product is not temperature.
And you're looking for this to be a permanent solution as opposed to a temporary one until, I don't know, the impacts of COVID, you know, wanes or...
Yeah, that was... The request would be based on the uncertainty to keep this here for the near future. I don't know what that... I think the testimony is we don't know what that means and there could be no need in five years. But currently, and they've, you know, they've been doing this since 2020 when the height of the pandemic and there's still a need for these.
Yeah, I mean, we were doing a lot, right, during the height of the pandemic that no longer exists. So, I mean, are we voting on this being a permanent?
That's your application.
All right.
Application, permanent.
Okay.
Doesn't mean they'll always keep them there, but they'd be allowed to.
You're renting these or leasing them?
Correct.
Any other questions by the board?
Is it a... Sorry, is it a lease to own or is it?
Just releasing.
So if your business slows down, you're going to reduce your rent costs on data?
That would definitely be the goal.
Costing them money. If they're empty, you're not going to need them.
Yep.
Any other questions? Are there... There's no members. Everybody here is with you?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to dispense with asking members of the public unless there's somebody hiding under a bench somewhere. Want to call your next witness?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next witness is Matthew Kunsman.
Is that the engineer or planner?
It's our engineer from Bowler.
So you raise your right hand. You swear a firm testimony you'd rather give before the board's true self you got? And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Sure. My name is Matthew Kunsman. My last name is spelled K-U-N-S-M-A-N.
And you're engineer. All your licenses are in full force in effect?
Uh, yes.
And you've qualified either before this board or other boards in the state of New Jersey?
Uh, other boards.
Mr. Chairman, he's been sworn and qualified.
Okay, thank you.
You want to mark this?
Mr. Kaplan? The issue of the view that last picture, I guess it's page three of the little package.
Yep.
Looking at an aerial, it would appear that if you're in that restaurant, you're going to be looking at the other side of the building.
I saw that.
They're not a view.
And I didn't see that.
Well, he's setting up. I got a quick question.
I didn't see it until after.
How many of these containers are empty at this time? How many are filled?
It's a great question. Let me get the answer for you.
Thank you.
I think they're all full.
They're all full at this time?
Yeah.
Must mean business is good still.
Mr. Kunsman, you provided an exhibit. This is marked as A2. Can you explain to the board what A2 depicts?
Sure. This exhibit's called Site Layout Exhibit. It's prepared by Bowler dated August 2, 2022. And for reference, north is to the top of the page. And just for clarification, the restaurant is on, I guess, the eastern side that was questioned before, across where my pointer's pointing.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there's a pathway of going in that many customers do, which is around that corner.
Sure.
I don't think... See how you could see those containers from the restaurant unless you've got X-ray vision through the building. Am I wrong?
You can't see it from the restaurant, but you can see it from Lackawanna.
From Lackawanna, you can see it.
Yeah, and people go to the field.
Look to the right. From the restaurant, you look to the left.
Any families head up that road, go to General?
Yeah, so if I describe this exhibit, I'll provide information about vantage points, height differences, and things like that. To the north of the site is the railroad, which is elevated, and then you have Bloomfield Avenue that runs to the north of the site. If you're beyond the railroad, you will not be able to see the site because the railroad blocks in, the vegetation, and things like that. To the east is the ramp from Bloomfield Avenue, and then you have Lackawanna Avenue on the bottom of the page. To the west of this site is another industrial use. There is a buffer between the two uses. The streets surrounding the site are much lower. There is actually a slope easement in the rear of the site. It's... I don't have exact topography, but it has to be at least approximately 10 feet of grade change. So if you're driving on the street, driving southbound, you cannot see where the trailers are positioned on the site because of the vegetation and the grade change.
They're lower?
The street is lower than the trailers in the rear of the site. Also, when you're coming off the road onto this ramp, you're also lower than the site by approximately 10 feet. So you will not be able to see into the site. I personally drove this ramp this morning and drove really slow. There was no one on the road. So I pretty much stopped my vehicle right where my mouse or where my laser pointer's pointing and I looked back over here. You can't see the trailers parked there. So however, if you are in this restaurant parking lot, it is elevated, similar to the site, similar elevation relative. And sure, you might be able to, from the corner of the parking lot, see into the back of the site, but it's a very small opening between the vegetation and the corner of the building.
I got a... I'm just not... Why is it so disorderly plotted there? I mean, I know this is an industrial area, but I would think that it's in the interest of the board to have this look a little bit more or as aesthetically pleasing as possible. Why is everything so dispersed in a scattered way?
Do you want to?
The picture seems to show they are somewhat organized. You look at the aerial site plan and it does.
I'm looking at that.
But let's run through. Let's address the... You have a red X on...
Yes.
Trailer... I'm sorry, on containers seven through 15 on the plan, correct?
Yeah, so the tenant of the property, they placed the trailers on top of, you know, the parking lot. They're not on top of landscaping or anything like that. However, they weren't aware that there was a sanitary sewer easement, which was one of the comments in the letter. So what we're proposing here is to take the trailers that I have Xed out.
The containers.
The containers, sorry. Sorry about that. Containers Xed out and then rotate it 90 degrees and shift it a little bit closer to Lackawanna Avenue. So that way, you're not seeing a row of trailers. You might only just see the side of the trailer or one trailer from Lackawanna Avenue. And it would be, you know, further away from Bloomfield Avenue and the intersection as well. So less visibility to a number of trailers if you were able to see them from the roadway, which I highly doubt.
But if you're saying that it is not visible from... Oh, so you're saying the side one here in the red is not visible from Bloomfield, but the ones that you have Xed out would be visible from Bloomfield Avenue?
No, they are not.
Well, so what... Yeah, I'm not understanding the rationale behind that because...
Let me walk.
It's on the sewer easement. You've got to move them.
Okay, all right, all right.
They're...
All right, whatever. Okay, got it.
The reasoning for relocation is for sanitary easement.
So by spinning them 90 degrees and putting them in your new red rectangle, you're only going to be seeing the side of the container, not the front of seven containers, correct?
Yes, and that's similar to a view as well that you would have from Lackawanna Avenue of a tractor trailer that's parked in the loading dock. It's no different.
Which is permitted?
Yes.
Which is permitted?
Yes.
And which is there? And that's shown on your diagram. That's the blue, light blue trailer that's sticking out of the building, correct?
Yes.
Have you guys thought of putting a fence off the corner of that building, you know, the driveway to address this visual issue?
Mr. Chadwick, where... On which side of the... On that side of the building?
The lower left-hand corner.
Oh, down here?
Right there.
We're talking...
Now you can't see it from Lackawanna. You demonstrated you can't see it from Bloomfield. And if you get a glimpse from the restaurant.
It's the driveway, John.
It's a residential... It's a non-residential area. It's a business, operating in a business area. What do we care?
Well, you know, I mean, it doesn't have to look like... It doesn't have to be aesthetic.
It could put a row of trucks in there and it wouldn't be here.
Operate a business.
You got to pick your battles, man.
It looks good, but it is not necessary.
So, Mr. Kunsman, you've analyzed the impact on parking, correct?
Uh, yes, I have.
And there was a comment either by the board engineer or Mr. Chadwick in one of the letters that you need to take into consideration that these containers have swing doors.
That's correct.
So you're taking that into consideration as far as loss of parking?
Uh, yes. So the existing number of parking spaces is 147 spaces on the site. Only 27 spaces, parking spaces are required on the site. Based on this exhibit and how we're proposing the layout of new trailers, you would have a reduction of approximately 69 parking spaces or a total of 78 proposed spaces, which exceeds the 27 required.
So based on the testimony, not only the code requirements that we're going to be exceeding, but based on the testimony from the applicant, do you feel that your reconfigured layout will still meet the parking needs of this facility?
Yes.
Do you have an opinion as to... You know what? We'll hold that for the planner. Any objection to any of the other recommendations from Mr. Chadwick or the board engineer or other professionals? I know there was. You've already addressed...
I'm trying to make sure I hit all their...
Yeah, you've addressed the sewer authority by pulling those containers out of their easement. There was a... How about lighting? One of the comments was lighting. Have you looked to see? I mean...
Currently, we do not have any proposed lighting, proposed lights on the plan. There are existing area lights that are mounted on the building and along the front where I believe the employees entered into the building, there are some pole mounted lights.
And in your opinion, there's no need for a change to lighting based on what's out there today?
Uh, no.
And you've heard the hours of operation that the facility essentially closes at 3:30 in the afternoon?
Yes.
Chairman, I have nothing further for this witness.
Any questions of this witness?
The only question I have is, I guess, where are we putting trailers 24 and 20... 23, 24, 25? I think we have to clear up their locations so that...
They're mobile. Sure, so...
No, but they're asking for 25 containers, so I'm guessing the mobile was all accounts.
So there are three containers I'll point out on my exhibit. Two of them are in the red new box where the proposed are. There's two containers that were called out on the plan that were mistaken for trailers, which have since been removed from the site.
So what's 24 here is a?
Recycling trailer. And 24 is the recycling trailer that they have. So it's not a container.
So that's gone, right? It's not there all the time?
No, that's there. That's there all the time, I believe.
That exact spot?
That's there all the time. That trailer, that receives, according to the applicant, that receives their bales.
So you want that to be container number 24?
I'm sorry?
So that's considered container number 24?
It's a trailer. It's on a chassis, right?
Yes.
But you're using it as a container for...
Semantically, are trailers and containers considered the same thing or are they different?
The containers are a little shorter in length. They're not as long. And then the trailer is 53 feet.
Are you asking for 25 containers or 23 containers and two trailers?
25, to be clear.
25 containers.
25 containers.
That's not true.
Well, that's what he said.
24 is a trailer used for the recycling purposes.
Correct, but I believe that the...
It's going to stay that way.
It is, Mr. Chadwick. Our plans to have 20.
So you're designating the trailer 24 as a container?
It's not.
That was an error on the plan that Mr. Chadwick pointed out.
So it's not one of the 25?
It's not, but the applicant's testimony is they still would like to have 25 containers, exclusive of the trailers.
They're using 22 containers now. Where are the other three going to be located on a permanent basis? Because they're technically... Those three containers aren't on here, are they? Because this is a picture, so it's what is as opposed to a plan. Why don't we ask the applicant, have you got rental of 22 trailers or containers
Why don't we ask the applicant, have you got rental of 22 trailers or containers of 25? Have you contracted to get three more? Are they all full?
We
To make it simple, Chairman, 22, 22 containers.
We don't want more than 22.
We will, yeah.
And the other ones are mobile trailers and not part of this application. They can move around, they cannot be there, deliveries, whatever. Does that make sense, Bernie?
Reduce the request from 25.
Two trailers.
Sorry?
We're missing two trailers in the diagram.
There's a trailer located against the building. I don't know if it's hard to see on your
I missed that one, okay.
Yeah, that's the one, that's an actual
Sorry, is that a container?
That's a trailer on wheels.
So I've counted
There's a container there, too.
John says we don't need a variance for the trailers.
Right, so I'm counting 20 containers.
I mean, can't you assemble this more orderly than this? I mean
Oh, I know why, because it starts in number three, there's no one and two.
I counted each box.
That's right.
One and two, one and two were on the left side, and those were trailers, not containers, that have been removed.
So I guess that's back to Chair, Bernie's question where you put those other, your 22 trailers?
The one that's marked, all right, so these numbers really technically are wrong, but it's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13. 21.
I got 21. All right, so we're at 21.
All right, so
A little closer to Lackawanna, make it parallel with those.
Well, are you leaving 16 where it is in the middle?
Yes, 16 would remain there.
So 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. So there's nine that are going to be in the red box.
How did you get here? Did somebody see that you had those containers in an easement and cite you or something? Why?
Not in the easement, the zoning official, or I'm assuming the zoning official saw the containers in general. It wasn't until the application was submitted that the sewer department said, well, the ones that are the furthest away are actually in their easement, they need to pull them forward. But the zoning official saw the actual container out there.
What about the container number 17? It seems to just touch the easement again.
16?
17.
We can adjust it, I believe it's a footer, so.
Again, I go back to, from an operational perspective, wouldn't it behoove you to just have it more aligned in an orderly fashion?
I think, yeah, I was gonna say, you know, there is an excessive parking demand for this facility with the number of employees. So if it concerns the number of parking spaces or something like that, we can eliminate parking spaces and adjust it to have the 22 containers and still have enough parking spaces.
I would submit the only sort of haphazard would be the trailer that's 24 near the receptacle and the one that's against the building. The rest of them are in line, whether it's horizontal or vertical. Would you agree, Mr. Kunsman?
Oh, 16 is kind of
I don't, can I just ask my fellow board members? I'm a little confused. I don't understand what the importance of where they put their containers are. It's their business. If it's three feet to the right, three feet to the left, what do I care? If they're out of the easement
Spoken like a true businessman, Mr. Jaskiewicz.
And I get it, I get where you're coming from, but what do I care? They're here, they're running a business.
Are you gonna put them neatly? Are they gonna be orderly? You're not gonna Can I talk while you
I'm sorry, I was answering Mr. Jaskiewicz.
While I was talking. Are they gonna be neat, orderly? They're not gonna be on the sewer?
Correct, correct.
And they're not gonna be in a position that's gonna affect traffic, truck traffic, take line of sight out for anything? Mr. Chadwick, can you make a recommendation as to what
Why don't you specify that you approve 22 trailers, 9 by 40 feet in dimension, that all should be located through the rear of the building? That way, they're as much out of sight as they can be.
I think that's the answer. It will save us a lot of discussion.
So that, sorry.
Mr. Kaplan.
The one missing trailer, where's it go?
We can put it with the red box, yeah, and it'll still be behind the building as Mr. Chadwick recommended.
Out of curiosity, trailers, I'm sorry, containers three through six, why not just turn them and keep it all uniform?
I'm sure it can be done, I would just, I'm not sure of operations or
I'm not resting the entire game on five trailers.
I mean, just because, I guess our position is, and I'm not speaking for him, I'm speaking for me, just because it is an industrial area doesn't necessarily mean it needs to be as unsightly as possible, and so why couldn't those trailers just be turned around and continue that line?
Great recommendation. So these, these four
Yep, exactly. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much, sir.
Sorry about the confusion.
Nope, no problem.
In general, the applicant has to accommodate appropriately for their business needs, so it should look good also for your business.
I approve this plan.
Has amended.
Any other questions of this witness?
No 22nd trailer on this.
Any other testimony?
Just one, our planner will address the use variance.
But you're done with him?
We're done, thank you, Mr. Kunsman.
You're gonna have to submit a plan that shows the trailers
Rotated.
Rotated, plus 22nd trailer.
We will, yes, we will absolutely
That'll be part of the resolution.
Even though it's not there yet, or now, but
I hope we get money's worth out of this 22nd trailer.
Well, you don't have to put it there. They just could, they have the, they have the option of putting it there. They do not have to put
The difference is, the difference is, is this exhibit is a photograph, not a real drawing on the plan.
Correct.
That's the difference.
Mr. Raise your right hand. Do you swear a firm testament about the gift before the board's true self you got? I do. For the record, could you please state and spell your name?
My name is John Taekeena, T as in Thomas, A I, K as in Kelly, I N A. I'm a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey and have been since 1992.
And you've been qualified either before this board or other boards?
I have never been in Precipiny, but I've been before more than 100 boards around New Jersey in the past 29 years.
I was gonna say, I never, I don't think you had ever been here before.
No, never been here.
Welcome.
And I was with Shore de Palma for seven years, and I don't know how I
Oh, gosh, wow.
Never came to one of our hometowns.
You swore to qualify.
Thank you. Mr. Taekeena, you've analyzed the plans, and you're familiar with the land use ordinance and the master plan of the township of Precipiny?
Yes, I have.
You understand the relief we're seeking for outdoor storage from the section of the code that I referenced earlier this evening?
Correct.
And you're prepared this evening to provide the planning justifications that would allow these containers to remain?
Yes.
Feel free to do so.
Thank you. So I'm here to talk about it from a planning standpoint. We've talked about the site at 50 Lackawanna Avenue. It has a 71,000-foot building with parking and loading. You've heard the description of the now 22 trailers that are located on the site and will be relocated neatly and arranged neatly in accordance with a revised plan that'll be provided to the board. So the approval we're seeking is to continue the storage of materials not within an enclosed building or otherwise screened by walls or fences or landscaping. So I'll talk about why we think that this lot can be accommodated, issues can be accommodated on this lot. So we are seeking a use variance or a D1 variance is what your zoning officer determined. So there's really three kind of, three things we need to talk about specifically, and then talk about the overall negative criteria that the board always discusses. So we'll talk about particular suitability, we'll talk about special reasons, which come from the purposes of zoning in the MOUL. And then finally, we'll talk about the enhanced Medici proof, which is, why hasn't the zoning ordinance addressed this? Why hasn't it addressed storage containers as a use on the property at this time? And then, as I said, we'll talk about the negative criteria. So in terms of particular suitability, the subject property is relatively large site, it's 71, it's seven acres, and it contains enough space for the proposed storage while still having the availability of parking, loading, et cetera, for the existing use. And Mr. Kunsman detailed the excess of parking that is available on the site, even though we still remain well below the 70% purview coverage for the district, and the building coverage is well below the 25% that's provided. The subject property is bounded by Route 46 and the railroad, and it's very important that it's substantially above Route 46 and the adjoining roadway at the intersection. So, you know, while there is a substantial wooded area that abuts Route 46 and, you know, and wraps around the building, it's really the grade that screens the view as much as anything from a driver or pedestrian on the street as the woodlands do. And that, and that grade is significant. As Mr. Kunsman said, it's probably on the order of 10 feet. And I would say Route 46 is probably 15 feet below the level of the railroad, which is essentially the level of the trailer area. And then finally, I talked about the sufficient flexible parking to accommodate proposed use in its normal operations. And the applicant provided some testimony for the board indicating that they have customized and specialized this building in the nine years that they've been here for their business and for their manufacturing business that is present in the SED, in the SED V Zone District here. And because of that customization of the building and the modifications they made to the building, we think that it's particularly suited to have the storage for that use to occur here on the site. In terms of the positive criteria, I would just rely on criteria G, and I apologize if we'll read it, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses in open space, both public and private, according to the respective environmental requirements to meet the New Jersey, the needs of New Jersey citizens. And quite simply, your ordinance provides for these SED V districts, they're encouraged to be manufacturing, to be employment and economic generators for the community. And actually, when I talk to the negative criteria, I'll talk about actually, your master plan talks about protecting them and being adaptable in terms of how these businesses are continuing to evolve and modernize as we move through time. And your ordinance and your master plan, for better or worse, kind of get a snapshot in 10-year increments. So your last reexamination was in 2014, you know, eight years ago, and I guarantee we didn't consider a global pandemic in 2014 at that time, but we'll talk about it in terms of actually the manufacturing use as well. In terms of the Medici standard, so I think that, you know, we have a use, outdoor storage that is considered by ordinance, but I think the combination of the expanding use of shipping containers for other uses, like site storage, and they're used for housing, they're used for all sorts of things, because there's a glut of them in New Jersey. So I think that this evolving use of these site storage containers is one that wasn't envisioned in 2014, and I think that this is just an additional way to accommodate outdoor storage that really is an outdoor. It's not unsightly, the containers are well-maintained, they all kind of match, would have been nice if they were green instead of tan, but, you know, what can you do? You know, but I think that it's not a, you know, but it wasn't envisioned by the ordinance, but it's rather a hybrid arising from the unique use of these shipping containers. And I think the nature of the containers here is, and I think as Mr. Chadwick said, if they're on a chassis and they were merely parked, we're not seeking any relief. It's the fact that they're taken off the chassis and they're on the ground that that creates the relief, and I think that having it lower to the ground and being less visible is probably a benefit. And then finally, in terms of the negative criteria, can it be granted without substantial detriment to the public good? And does it impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the master plan? So this proposal is for storage in conjunction with the permitted use for a longtime business in town that continues to be an asset to the community. It's not a noxious use. We're storing the packaging materials for the business, we're not storing the chemicals and things like that. It is literally boxes of bottles and caps that are then used for the eco-friendly products inside, and it doesn't have substantial negative exterior impacts. They're quiet, they don't need to be lit, they don't need to be accessed, you know, at night or anything, and this is an SED V industrial area. So from a land use standpoint, we're not going to impair the master plan. The master plan and its subsequent 2014 reexamination addresses the SED and the threats to them and the unique value they bring to the community. The reexam talks about the need to balance proper functions of these zones while keeping them in manufacturing or employment uses and not merely continuing to evolve into more retail-type of uses like sports training. This balance includes working with specific businesses to keep them viable, I think particularly in this COVID environment. The zoning ordinance did envision the use, I think just not the specific way to trust on the site. We believe it can be accommodated well because of the unique topography and arrangement that we have here, and it's not going to certainly impair the intent of the zoning ordinance in the SED V District. And finally, we do not expect any site issues. There's more than adequate parking, trash, and recycling facilities. The site is within coverage and setback limits and uniquely sited to isolate the use from view from the streets. So from these reasons, I believe the board can make the appropriate findings for the granted use variance, and I welcome any questions.
If these were 22 trailers, would you be here?
No.
Any other questions by the board? Any other witnesses?
No, Chairman, thank you.
You want to sum?
I'll waive summation. I think you've heard the evidence that we presented. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
With the modifications that the applicant has made, with repositioning, numbering corrections, with the trailers being designated as such, do we need to go into conference?
Not for me. I just want to make sure that Mr. Holloway's eight points have been satisfied with what you addressed.
You talked about some lights, and they covered the issues about the operating times and things of that nature, so yes. If there's any other questions you have regarding the letter? If there was a conditions in the resolution, we can always talk.
Appreciate it.
I'm sorry, talk to what? I didn't hear.
Oh, during compliance review, I go over with the applicant. If it's in a resolution, I make sure that it's covered.
I looked at your memo, there was no showstoppers there.
No.
Cosmetic stuff. Motion to, someone like to make a recommendation? It looks like it's a nice local, family-run business that is a benefit to the township, the employed people, pay property taxes, I assume? Any other comments about why we should approve this? Someone like to frame a resolution?
Sure, application number 22, call 19, 50 Lackawanna Avenue LLC, 50 Lackawanna Avenue Block 135 Lot 2, Zone SED-5A, recommending granting a Site D, Site Plan B variance for outdoor storage of shipping containers and agreeing with anything, they will concur with CHAZ and agree to do so.
Second, ready.
Any discussion? Laura, please call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowicz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Ree.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Will, oh, Ira Kane.
Yes. The various variances granted, we'll memorialize this at our next scheduled meeting, which I believe I will not be at. Is it like the 14th of September or something?
Oh, next meeting in next month?
I know we're off Labor Day week, and I'm gonna be in Europe, anyway. And then, well, obviously, there's no big whoof, we've already got the things there, so.
I'll send it to you for review.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Thank you, everyone. We've got a lot accomplished tonight.
See you in September.
Yes, Nora, I will not be at the next meeting.
Okay, the next meeting?
I am going flying to Greece, to Athens. No, I'm flying to Greece.